County Council Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chad Williams will give the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. God, thank you for many blessings you've given this county and its people. Please be with us tonight as we try to best use these resources in your intent. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is oath of office. When I call your name, if you'd come forward in front of Mr. Kendry here. Jewel Rogers, Ed Lindsey, Greg Lentz, Carolyn Mendenhall, Richard, how do I pronounce that last name? Are you here, Richard?
Cocoon.
Cocoon. And Alton Johnson.
(laughter)
Oh, that's a public hearing. So the ones you circled are public hearings. The ones that aren't circled are... Right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Andy.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Under appearances first, I want to recognize our county manager, Bill Shanahan. He has a gift that his son sent to us.
I can honestly say I did not know about this. I knew something was coming. And on Friday, I got this box. And in this box is an American flag that has been folded the way it should be folded, and a certificate. And so I'm going to read the certificate if that's okay. United States Air Force. This is to certify the accompanying American flag was flown on the fourth day of September 2017 in your honor aboard a U.S. Air Force C-130H aircraft during combat missions over the skies of Iraq. This flag is presented to the York County Council on behalf of Staff Sergeant Robert A. Shanahan, the 386 Expeditionary Security Forces Squadron Fly Away Security Team, and the crew of the Chrome 73 while deployed to southwest Asia supporting America's war on terrorism through Operations Inherent Resolve. And so they asked me to give it to y'all. He did, so...
Well, we're going to let you hang on to it. And you said you were going to...
I'll take it.
...frame it?
(laughter) Very cool.
And we can display it in the new admin building and just tell your son, "We're honored to have that privilege that he did this for his dad and for the county."
I actually thought it was a present for me.
Okay. Next order is appearances. Watts Huckabee. There you are. And Watts, remember you have up to 10 minutes.
All right. I'll only take a few, though. I'll spare you the time. I'll give that to somebody else. All right. Y'all will be able to see them in just a minute. Okay, I'm Watts Huckabee. I'm here on behalf of the York County H-Tax. I want to give you some quick background before I move into the reason I'm here tonight. Just as a reminder, the H-Tax Commission that exists now was reformed back in June of 2014. So our first meeting in June of '14 is when I took over as Chair of the H-Tax for the county. As you all know, the H-Tax money, it's a 2% tax that's generated from the unincorporated areas of the county, the restaurants and unincorporated areas of the county. The 2% is collected, and that's what's used to generate the H-Tax funds. Back in 2014, when our group was established initially in the first year of '14, we were only responsible for making suggestions to you all to fund grant and marketing applications, even though we knew in 2015 we were going to start considering capital projects. So in preparation for the capital projects, what we did was we initiated some meetings. At the end of 2014, we had two meetings, one in November and one in December. And what we did was we reached out into the county and we invited in stakeholders. So we invited in private developers, private businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, Attractions, Carolin's, since they're one of the major contributors to H-Tax, churches, government, PTRs, YMCA's, and school districts. So we tried to pull together as many people here in this community that represent groups of people that have an opinion on where we need to invest money to promote tourism here in the county. So from that, we gathered a lot of good information, in addition to reading some other reports and studies that you all had paid for back in the late, I guess, 2009, maybe 2011, if I remember those dates right. But y'all paid for some studies to be completed. So in 2015, our group suggested to you all your first capital project allocations, which you all allocated monies, I think, to three different projects so far. And then in 2016, I came to you and I asked you to consider not funding any more capital projects, to allow a subgroup, a study group, to go out and actually study what capital projects the county might want to consider investing money in, kind of taking a more proactive approach instead of the H-Tax meeting once a month. And we have groups come to us to say, "Hey, we'd like $2 million, $3 million, $5 million, $10 million for a project. We thought it would be a good idea to take these studies that you all had paid for in the past and also talk to the community and find out what projects might be a priority for you all to consider." So the study group that was led by David Grig, David Grig was the past Chair of the CVB, so he led a group of individuals that met and came up with a list of projects they thought made sense for you all to consider. When I rotated off of H-Tax back in July as the chairman, so I asked them to allow me to meet with this group and come up with a report for council to hear. So David Grig, who, like I said, was the Capital Project Study Group Chair, Kevin Madden, our county treasurer, Avvis Cole, who's the Innen Director of the CVB, and Mark Van Sickle, who's the current Chairman of the H-Tax, we met and took these projects and condensed them down into three recommendations for you all to consider. So the three recommendations that you're going to see up on the board and you have in front of you on a sheet of paper are not in any particular order. They're just three that we think you ought to consider, and they're very broad as well. So if you look at the three that we have on the sheet, the first one, and again, not in any order, is the Catawba River Corridor. We feel like that when you read through the studies and you listen to people here in the county that have a vested interest in promoting tourism and business development here in the county, the Catawba River Corridor was one of the three we think that you, as county council people, ought to consider researching what we need to be doing greater on the Catawba River. That could include maybe a partnership between the Museum of York County and Catawba Indian Nation, explore the river's history, rafting, canoeing, whitewater opportunities. There's a lot that could be done on the Catawba River. Secondly is agritourism, again, not in any order, but this could be some type of mixed-use facility that has an agritourism component to it. A little sidebar, Britt called me a month or so ago and asked me if I would co-chair this group with Tommy Pope. So Tommy Pope and I are co-chairing the agritourism study group. We had a meeting at the first of this month. We're now set to meet the fourth Wednesday of every month moving forward until we are able to come back to you, which we hope will be in short form, to make a suggestion on what we think should happen with agritourism. But explore agritourism. What kind of needs are there here in York County? You all paid for a study that explored agritourism as well. You hired a company down in Florida back in 2009, 2008 that provided a report. We've gone back to that entity. Yeah, you've paid for two reports. You're right, Chad. So we've gone back to that entity that, I think that the third one was actually part of the second one, which was part of the first one. But you're right, there are three different documents, but I think all three are from the same company. So we went back to that company since we have a vested interest in you all invested money. And then we went back to them, a subgroup did, led by Kristy Cox, has gone back to that group and asked them to put another proposal together on what it would cost to update that proposal, to include Tryon, North Carolina. You know what's happened in Tryon. Western North Carolina has an agritourism facility as well up off of 26. So a lot has changed since 2009 when that report was prepared. So we've asked them to give us a price on what it would take to update that and taken into consideration the changes and what's evolving as our workforce gets younger and millennials are the ones that we're going to need to depend on for the success of projects like this in the next 10, 15, 20 years. We need to take that into consideration. And then number three, again, not in any order, was Lake Wylie. The county has some interest in what could be done further that could be done at Ebenezer Park, Allison Creek, Buster Boyd Bridge, restaurants, maybe dock rentals, tours, who knows? There's a lot that could be done on the Catawba River. But in short, we see the three greatest assets here in the county are the Catawba River Corridor, which would include the Catawba Indian Nation, some type of agritourism facility, and the possible development of more activities on Lake Wylie. Last thing I'll say is our group has struggled with this defining in the ordinance what it is that we really should be suggesting to you all to fund. And I think a good example of this is when we made our suggestion for grant and application allocate, grant and marketing allocations. I think you all took this up at your last meeting, last month. Our group had communicated to the entities here in the county that have requested monies, we've been cheering with them since 2014, that that allocation that they're requesting was probably going to continue to decrease year after year after year until we got to the point where we may be suggesting to you all to not even make an allocation. We wanted to wean most of the entities that requested money, wean them off of that money. And y'all took a pretty broad step in that last month to move in that direction. So what I'd like to ask you all to do is to take a look at the ordinance and try to make a decision whether the ordinance needs to promote tourism in York County. The ordinance specifically says that, that you want to take these monies collected from H-Tax and you want to invest them in the county to promote tourism here in the county. That gets kind of complicated because tourism in the county could be tourism developed in Rock Hill. It could be in Fort Mill. It could be in Clover. It could be in Tigakay. It could be in different areas, right? Specific to the area. So I think you need to think about, do you want this money to be invested to promote tourism in York County, which is pretty broad? Or do you want to promote tourism with the defined intent to generate H-Tax dollars through the restaurants and the unincorporated areas of the county? And there is a difference. When you think about it, there's a distinct difference between what I just said. So do you want to take these monies and you're collecting about $2 million a year in H-Tax monies? Four now?
Two point four.
Two point four, yeah. Two point four million a year. It's going up about $200,000 a year. And it's going to go up more with an effort that Kevin's put in place to pursue restaurants that should be paying into the fund. But are you looking to promote tourism in the county? Are you looking to promote tourism that helps generate new H-Tax dollars? Our group kind of feels like it needs to be the latter, not the first. But ultimately, that's up to y'all. Any questions?
I'll allow questions for anybody. Mr. Roddy?
I hope someone else got some questions, because I don't want to be the one asking a question. When you mentioned agritourism facility in the study group that you spearheaded...
Yes.
Have we gotten to the point where we're talking, looking at any specific location? Or is just...
Not at all.
We're just getting going?
Not at all. I'll say this, I'm glad you asked the question. Tommy and I have agreed, Tommy Pope and I have agreed, that this project, first and foremost, we have to look at the needs. What are the needs here in the county? And the needs have changed since that first report came out back in 2008, 2009. You now have Tryon, North Carolina. If you haven't pulled that up and looked at that facility, that's an impressive facility. And we can't afford to compete with a facility like that. University City, Knowledge Park, wasn't really a discussion back then. It is now. So Wentworth University probably has some plans on the books that we need to be made aware of. And there are probably other groups here in the county that are doing things we're even, we're unaware of. And we need to know what's going on so that as we plan to invest money potentially, or you all plan to invest county tax dollars in a facility, that we're not replicating what's already here or what could be here in the future. So as far as location's concerned, there's no discussion on location now. We're trying to define the need. And once we define the need, then we're going to determine how much money can be generated based on what we think the needs are for the county. And that'll backdoor into eventually coming to you and saying, "What do you think?" And then lastly would be selecting a site for the facility.
And one more question. I hate to put you on the spot on this one. Like you mentioned, we took a drastic step on, you know, just totally wiping out some funding to support some local events in the area. What would be, and I mentioned during that time about weaning these events off the monies. And I was thinking about how do we incorporate some timeline to say, you know, a 10-year-running event, 15-year-running event, five-year-running event, kind of just the tipping point to where the money's not available. But at the same time, when I talk to people around town that say, "Hey, when I go out to eat at these local restaurants as well, I'm a local. I'm paying into this fund. So how can we just cut it off completely?" Because let's face it, our locals are hitting these restaurants up, and it's not all just generated from outsiders coming, putting this money into, putting this money into the coffers that these organizations are coming for to try to get to support. So, and I think we need to keep that in mind because all the tourism money that we're touting at our restaurants and all, it doesn't come from the outsider. A portion of it, and I'm pretty sure a sizable portion, comes from us going out to eat local at the, I don't want to call it a restaurant's name, but at our local eateries that's paying into this. So we are technically still supporting these events through local money as well as the outsiders. So I think we still need to keep that in mind when we're looking to say, "No more." Because our taxpayers are paying a good portion into these financial chests that organizations are coming and asking for. So I guess my question is, I hate to put you on the spot, what's a good...
Oh, that's okay.
What's a good number to say, "Hey, you know, you should be up and running, well-established, and kind of limit a graduated program or festival. This is the max you can get after a long-running period." But we don't want to cut you off, but we do recognize our locals are still paying into this. So it's like a max, a low-end max that still, our local programs could still come and ask for.
Well, hospitality tax is different than accommodations tax. So the hospitality tax is generated from, yes, us here in the county that go to the restaurants and unincorporated areas, and people from coming outside of the county. So you're going to generate it from both. There's nothing wrong with that. And I think that goes back to my question, I think you all need to think about, where do you want to, who and where do you want to invest these dollars? And do you want the dollars to generate new H-Tax dollars? And I'll give you an example, because this is just one I think of first, the Arts Council. So the Arts Council is seated on Main Street in Rock Hill, South Carolina. They had come to us in 2014, and we funded them. We funded them less than what they requested. They came in '15, we gave them less. '16, we gave them less. But in '16, we had told them in '15, "Look, you really need to do something in the unincorporated areas of the county to justify us, our council, giving you all monies." So they came back in '16. It might even have been in '15. But they added an art component in Baxter Village, because the restaurants in Baxter Village are the unincorporated areas, so we collect a 2% tax. So I think it depends on, I don't want to give you any more examples, but you know who you fund, you know who we funded in the past, and you have to look at that project and say, "If this festival is here, where are the people eating? Well, their vendors on site. So they're probably going to eat at the vendors on site or within walking distance of where that festival is held. So it's highly unlikely they're going to drive two miles or three miles to an unincorporated restaurant to eat or drink." Right? So I think this goes back, I think y'all really need to think about the question, and that is, do you want to, do you want to allocate monies to promote tourism here in the county? Or do you want to allocate monies to help generate more H-Tax dollars that generates monies for the county? Does that make sense? So I didn't specifically answer your question, but I think if you can answer that question, then you'll answer your question as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Watts, I was going to have you repeat that as you got to it, because I'm still a little murky. I think I know what you're saying, but if you want to do festivals in a town, whether you want to eat in the town, and not apply the H-Tax to unincorporated areas versus...
All right, let me give you an example. So University City. You give credit where credit's due. Rock Hill has done a phenomenal job with sports tourism, maybe one of the best in the southeast. So you give them credit for what they've done. But there are plenty of people on the H-Tax Commission, there are plenty of people here in the county that say, "Why do you keep giving money to Rock Hill? Why is it not going to help the county?" And you take University City, which we, you all, we suggested you all to allocate monies to that project, and you did. That project is going to be in Rock Hill. But there are so many people that are going to come into the county as a result of that project, it's highly unlikely, it's highly likely, we're going to have some spillover effect, not a lot, some spillover effect to help unincorporated restaurants. But mostly, you invested money in a project that's going to bring a lot of people to York County. A lot of people to York County, kind of like the BMX. You all invested in the BMX two years ago, and it had a huge impact. Now, did it have a huge impact on Rock Hill more than the county? Yes. But York County is on the map for BMX. Obviously, Rock Hill is part of York County, it's here on the map. So it was an investment more in tourism development, not in H-Tax generation. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
See the difference between the two? And I think you all need to talk through this at some point and decide where you want to invest your monies. Hey, other municipalities...
So they can complement each other, too.
Yeah.
Not that cut and dry.
And you might want to take a look at what other municipalities are doing, the city municipalities are doing. They don't have an H-Tax Commission. They don't have anybody advising them on where they should invest their monies. Some of them get ridiculed for that, too, but it might be something to think about.
Any other questions for, yes, or Mr. Johnson?
Not a question as much as a comment. One, I like the three things you all focused on. I think that's, I think that's excellent. I am concerned, though, that the council is basically studying agritourism to the exclusion of Lake Wylie or the Catawba River Corridor. There is no committee set up to study possibilities of, to do things on the Catawba River Corridor. There's no committee set up to study anything that happened in Lake Wylie. All there is is a committee that's set up to study agritourism.
Glad you brought that up.
Seventy percent of every dollar that's raised in H-Tax is raised in either District One or District Two, which touches the Catawba and Lake Wylie, which have one person sitting on an agritourism committee. I'm concerned that if we're going to, what we're doing is we're setting this up so that the instant thing is they're going to come up with a great plan, and I'm sure they will, but that's going to be the only plan we have. It's going to be the only game in town, so it's got to get the money. I'm concerned by that. I'd like to see us at least, whether we task the H-Tax Committee that exists today to start studying these other things, or we create other committees to do it. We should, if we're going to adopt that these are the three areas we want to spend money on in the future, we should have three distinct plans come before this council at one time, and we pick the winner or loser from those three, as opposed to, "Well, here's the only one we studied." And I'm afraid that's where we're headed, is that we're headed that this is the only one we bothered to study, and by default, it's the winner. So I'm asking that we, you know, I think the H-Tax group really did a good job. I mean, I was, I was a skeptic. I'll be the first to say I was a skeptic when y'all began this. I like the fact that you developed a plan on all three areas and said, "Hey, this is something we can focus on." Well, it's almost, I feel like we picked a winner, and I don't, and I'm asking us not to pick one. I'm asking us to diversify this a little bit more, and let's have three distinct committees in some way studying this issue.
Chad, right quick. You delivered my closing.
Hang, hang, hang.
You delivered my closing, because that, we agree 100%. We feel like there needs to be two more groups set up. This group was already established from the past, so that was a continuation group. Kerry Tilly from the museum has already agreed, if you all, after your meeting tonight, decided you want to move forward with what you want to do, he would like to be involved with the Catawba River Corridor group. So yeah, I agree 100%. There needs to be three groups, but I do want to say this right quick. We feel like these are three priorities for you all to consider now and in the future. It's not a matter of picking one project. It will probably be a matter of picking what project's going to be first, and which one's going to be second, and which one is going to be third. But, I mean, take the Catawba Indian Nation as an example. You may or may not agree, but the Catawba Indian Nation is probably the greatest asset we have in this county.
Definitely the most underutilized.
Most underutilized asset we have in the county. So, and that's part of, number one, that's in there. So I agree with everything you said, and that was in my closing comments, was to ask you all to form two more study groups to study these and come back and discuss all three of them, because the next thing, you know, you mentioned property, but how in the world are you going to fund, what it's going to take to fund all three of these projects? But all three of these projects probably ought to take place in the next 15, 20, 25 years.
Well, let me point out something, Chairman, since I organized this group. Obviously, like...
I think I'll take care of that.
Well, let me, let me just speak a little bit here, Mr. Williams.
I had my hand up.
The, and I'll definitely recognize it like I always do. But anyway, you know, the Ebenezer Park, we've got a lot of focus on right now. The Allison Creek area, we've got a lot of focus on with Duke and all the other stuff going on. The Catawba Indian Nation and the museum are supposed to be in the board, museum board's supposed to be actively working with them. So I mean, the other areas, I understand, but they're actively being pursued every day. The ag tourism thing was a situation where, well, this has been drifting for 10 years out there. Do we either need to consider it or not? That was the reason for this. It wasn't to say, "Hey, let's not have any tourism, but focus on ag tourism." It was to answer a question, up or down finally, to move on. The other things are being proactively considered all the time by the natural bodies that deal with that. But we've got to quit this territorial stuff. We've got to stop that. We've got to start looking at it for the county as a whole, and not say, "Oh, I got to get my pie over here, and I got to get my pie over here," because in the meantime, the citizens are losing. Mr. Williams, your turn.
All right. Thank you, sir. I would just want to point out, I mean, part of this is, and we've had conversations, Watts and I went to high school with each other. I taught him a lot. But we've had conversations, but...
Watts is that old?
Yeah, he is. I'm not, I'm as young as Watts. I just look old. But I just want to make sure we don't skip a step. I mean, one problem they have now is the ordinance says you spend the money on sports tourism related. None of the top three are sports tourism. I mean, you can use sports, you can incorporate them all in here. But one thing that he was inviting, that he's been trying to point out, and I guess that I've heard, and just want to make sure we all hear, is we need to look at the ordinance. We need to pick what, to pick what we want it to say and how we want to go. I just want to make sure we don't form two other committees. I mean, I understand why this one, agritourism, is working. I just want to make sure we don't form two other committees without first having the discussion of what direction do we want to go in, and, oh, by the way, let's prove it and fix the ordinance, and then do it. Just want to make sure we get it all in the right order.
Thank you, Watts.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
The next item is public forum session. Oh, okay. Well, I appreciate that. I was going to have you read it, but thanks, Andy. So I'm going to let the motion and second on the consent agenda, well, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. You got me off track. So we got the public forum coming up. You have up to two minutes to speak, to come before council, just two minutes, no more than that, because we have to be fair to the person after you. And a lot of people signed up for what we're going to have a public discussion on, so a public hearing. So if I don't mention your name, as in the people that signed up for Dave's Road or Atkins Road, that's going to be under public hearing, so you can wait for that. It won't be long. And you can have unlimited, unlimited time to speak. If you just come up right now for a public hearing, you get your, I mean, public forum, you get your two minutes, and that's it. So it's always better to wait for the public hearing since they're already listed. So the ones that are not on the public hearing, I'm going to call out. And if for some reason, somebody that signed up for the public forum and just wants to take two minutes and not wait for the public hearing, where your time is unlimited, just raise your hand when I'm done announcing the names, and I'll ask, "Is there anybody else?" And then you can go ahead and speak and just forget the public hearing, but you're better off waiting for the public hearing. First person is Bruce Bivens. Yes, sir. And just be sure to give your name and address.
My name is Bruce Bivens. I live at 250 Baxter Lane, Fort Mill, South Carolina. And I just wanted to, I was going to address the council about the water tank that they've got scheduled to be erected. But reading the handout, it looks like everything's pretty much a done deal already from everything I've read. So all I want to note is, York County have any type of program set up to help all the affected property owners if there's a devaluation of property? Anybody?
We just listened to you, and for that, two minutes, we don't...
Okay. Well, that's my question, is there any, any type of program set up?
My name is Bruce Bivins, I live at two fifty Baxter Lane, Fort Mill, South Carolina. And I just wanted to, I was gonna address the council about the water tank that they've got scheduled to be erected, but reading the handout, it looks like everything's pretty much a done deal already, from everything I've read, so all I wanna note is, York County have any type of program set up to help all the affected property owners, if there's a devaluation of property? Anybody?
We just listened to you, and for that, two minutes, we don't-
Okay. That, well, that's my question, is there any, any type of program set up? So, I guess I'll get an answer sometime. Thank you.
Yes, sir, and you can talk to the county staff, the county manager. Uh, the next person is Kelly Roberts.
Hello, I'm Kelly Roberts, I live at two twenty-four Baxter Lane, this is my son Ryan Roberts, we both live at two twenty-four Baxter Lane, and he has some questions.
And here again, we just listen, we don't answer any questions.
Hi, my name's Ryan Roberts, I live at two two four Baxter Lane, I'm concerned about people coming to the water tower and climbing it and spraying paint on it, how will it keep me safe? That's my first question. And, why are you building the water tower? That's the second question, so thank you for your time.
And some of the other questions, um, that I had were, how long will the construction be? Will there be construction at night interrupting our sleep? Um, we already have a difficult time getting in and out of our road, because it is just a one-way road. Um, during the construction, how will you ensure that we can get out and back in to our road? And to piggyback on that question, how will you ensure that emergency services can get to us, and that, that we will have water out there for, in, in case of a fire? That's all, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. And the next person was Penny Roberts.
Hi.
Hey.
My name's Penny Henning, and I live at two ten Baxter Lane. So, as you guys can imagine, I live right next door to this nice building, this, or water tower's gonna be going up, so I just wanted to share, I think my family and I, we support the county in developing the county, developing, you know, whatever needs to happen, you know, there's so many things that we can do with the roads, and with the water towers, and with the new homes that are coming in, we love that. I think our biggest concern is, is that we are probably one of the older families that are in the county, and, um, we have shared the space, and it's kinda been our heaven away from the busyness, but I think our biggest concern right now is, you know, what, what are you guys gonna do to help protect us? You know, we, we understand to, you know, support the county in development, and help the taxes, bring in the taxes, whatever we need to do, but, you know, what are you guys gonna do to protect us and our value with the homes? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next person's John, John Reinhardt.
Mr. Chairman, council members, my name is John Reinhardt, I live at twenty seventy five Courtney Road, York, South Carolina. I'm here on behalf of the Christmasville Board of Governors, and also have other members of that board with me this evening as well. First of all, I would like to ask your permission to speak on the issue, as the issue is on your agenda, under Old Business, consideration of Christmasville and funding, and I have information that I'd like to share with you, and I would ask Mr. Chairman for the opportunity to speak to council during that time.
Um, if we have a member of council that so moves that situation, when we come to that?
I'm, I'm-
So move.
Make the motion that he be allowed to speak to us during that.
Okay, we have a second, then?
Second.
Ball?
I'll second.
Uh, discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, next person is Russell Henson.
Yes, I will, uh, I'll wait for the-
Public hearing.
Oh, is that on the, uh, that was one I didn't think was a public hearing? Which, which one are you?
I'm, I'm on Dave's Road, public forum.
Yep, you're right, okay. Um, I believe that's it, then, so somebody that signed up that doesn't wanna do the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Go up, bro.
Yes, sir, and you got two minutes.
All right, sir.
Just name, name and address.
My name is Tom Montgomery, I live at six seven one two Otis Crosby Road, uh, just found out my first grade teacher here is in the audience, so I hope I don't embarrass her or myself, either one. Uh, just wanted to say, there's a subdivision going in below us, from what I understand from the zoning office, they're planning on putting, uh, one ha, house per five acres. Uh, my wife and I, like I say, live two houses down, uh, I can bring in, if you'd like to see, probably eight thousand dollars worth of surveys that we've had to done, uh, had to do for, uh, the Lake Wylie Buffer Zone Act and stuff like that, and from what I understand, these folks have already started clearing this property. Um, I don't know, I just, I believe if we had to do it, that, uh, everyone should have to do it, I'm not wanting to cause anybody any trouble, but, uh, when we, um, built our house seven years ago, we actually had to zone off so many acres to have it and our agricultural build on it, um, even though we had the twenty-nine point two-nine acres, and from what I understand, like I say, they're planning on putting one house per acre, so I just hope that, uh, whatever rules we had to go through, that, uh, everyone else does also, so, um-
Is that the Dave's Road? I mean, I-
No, ma'am, this is Atkins' Road, between, yes, ma'am, between North Shiloh and Highway forty-nine.
Chairman, did it say one per five or one per acre?
Uh, it, uh, from what the zoning office told us today, they have a five-acre tract, but they're gonna try to do one house per acre, five acre, or five houses total.
So that's, that's one per acre?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, I wrote it wrong.
It's actually split up in four houses, and split it up an acre and a quarter, the five acres, for four houses on that five.
Is that what it is? All right, sir. Yeah, the, uh, like I say, the zoning board said today, there was a, uh, originally a twenty-seven and a half acre tract that has been split into three tracts, eleven point two, eleven point two, and five acres, and the five acres right along the road was the one that they were planning, like I say, according to the, the zoning board, of putting one house per acre, is what they, uh, told us today. Is that it? All right, folks, thank y'all very much.
Thank you for your time. Okay, next item's consent agenda, I'm gonna ask for a motion in a second, but before we, uh, vote to accept it, I'm just gonna point out a couple of things, so if we could just go ahead and have a motion for consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And discussion, uh, part of the consent agenda, which is under consent agenda, because no council member up here would oppose it, is the proclamation proclaiming the week of October twenty-third to thirty-one is Red Ribbon Week, and I know we have some young Marines here, are you here? Come forward. Um, and here again, the Young Marine Program. The, uh, Young Marine Program is to develop good citizenship and promote a healthy, drug-free li, lifestyle in our youth. Drug awareness and education are vital and key elements, and the Young Marines fight against illicit drug use. Uh, the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in nineteen eighty-eight to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. Oc twenty, October twenty-third through thirty-first has been designated as National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon, boy, they like the R's together, don't they? To show their support for a drug-free environment, but I'm gonna, since y'all took the time to come here, I wanna read the proclamation out of respect for every one of you. Um, whereas communities across America have plagued by the numerous problems associated with the illicit, with the use of illicit drugs and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Mecklenburg County Young Marines of the Marine Corps League, to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Areeh Kiki Camerati?
Camerati.
Okay, a drug enforcement administrative special agent who was murdered in the line of duty and representing the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in nineteen eighty-eight to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduc, reduction efforts, and whereas October twenty-third through thirty-first has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to support their support, or to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, the York County Council does hereby proclaim October twenty-third through thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week in York County, South Carolina, and urges us all citizens to join us in this special observation adopted this eighteenth day of September twenty-seventeen. And thank you, gentlemen, for bringing this to us, and we respect what you do, and we respect each one of you. Did you wanna say anything, or?
Uh, Mr. Blackwell, I'd like to thank you again, uh, this is our second year receiving this proclamation from the board.
Yes, sir.
Uh, our program, we strongly emphasize on these kids to stay away from drugs, and we teach them about implications with the involvement of how drugs get transported America, how it's produced, and all of that stuff. Uh, these young men and ladies we have in our program, eight due to completion of high school, it's a really great program, gets the kids out to learn about teamwork, leadership, and discipline.
We thank everything, we thank you for what you do, it's real important to spend time.
Can we get a quick picture with y'all?
Sure. Yeah, you wanna come forward?
I don't know why you won't.
We, and, yeah, we better stand up, so we'll-
Bye. Oh, wow.
Everybody get close, I know we all love each other.
All right, thank you. We brought some, uh, ribbons and some, uh, bracelets for you guys.
Great, thank you, sir. Here again, I thank you for everything. All right, so now that we have a, uh, motion in a second, do we have any other discussion? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? And now I believe we get to the public hearing.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Records show that the first vote in the public hearings is my wife's employer, and so I'm accusing myself from the rest of the discussion.
That's stationary.
Okay, so we're gonna have a public hearing, number one, council to hold a public hearing and consider third reading authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement, by and between Tipperary Sales Incorporated, Project B five, the company in York County, South Carolina, whereby the York County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with the company, and providing for payment by the company of certain fees in lieu of ad blorum taxes, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park and other minors related thereto. Anybody here wanna speak against? Anybody wanna speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Robert, you can come back now.
I approach, uh-
Yeah, he's, this is, um, Mr. Floyd-
I'm one of the owners.
With the company, of the company-
Oh, okay.
It wasn't specified B five, we can ask, like, Lacy Boyd, so he is with-
If you wanna feel free, yes, sir?
My name's Mike Floyd, I live at five twenty-eight Valencia Road, Ridgeway, South I'm one of three owners of Tipperary Sales Incorporated, and I just want to represent the other two owners, we're very grateful for their opportunity to develop our new project here in York, York County. Uh, we're grateful for the support that we've gotten from York County through this, uh, this process. We're excited about the jobs this is gonna create, and the capital investment from this project. We're confident that this project will help develop great ties with Rock Hill and the York County communities. Chairman Blackwell, we really wanna thank you and the entire council for all the weeks of consideration for our company, we give you thanks for that, and we also would like to thank the York County Economic Development Board. And just to give you a little brief history on our, uh, on our company, we're a family-owned company, a Christian-based company, started in nineteen seventy-six, uh, with, uh, one store, three thousand square foot showroom, and a three thousand square foot warehouse. And in the past forty-one years, we've grown to eight stores throughout North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia, and from three employees to over a hundred and forty. And I got great news for you, we're looking forward to, to coming to York County with this new distribution center, which right now, we have thirty employees from York County that's working in our distribution center now in Chester, Chester County. So, this is gonna be a win-win situation for us, uh, we wanna be part of the community, and, uh, we're really looking forward to it, and all of our York County employees are looking forward to being able to be closer to work, and so we just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, sir, we work, uh, look forward to you bringing jobs to York County.
We are, I, I promise you that.
Thank you very much.
We need to talk about these chairs at some point, maybe we could-
We'll talk. But, thank you so much.
There we go. Thank you, sir. They had a good buy at, uh, Office Depot, or whatever it was. Um, okay, uh, next item, hold public hearing, consider second reading, case number seventeen twenty-three, to rezone from AGC to RUD one at four twenty-four Dave's Road in the York Community. So first, does anybody here wanna speak against? Yes, sir, saw your hand first. And just come up, and what everybody can do is just give your name and address, and say your piece, and we just listen.
Yes, sir. My name is Dave Williams, I live at sixteen thirty-two Stony Fork Road, York, South Carolina. Mr. Chairman and the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight concerning the rezoning of twenty-six point one acres in my backyard. Now, the agenda is to rezone nine of that twenty-six point one acres, but the lot is indeed twenty-six point one acres. One of the questions that I have, which I have many, don't have any answers, but I have a lot of concerns, what is the developer gonna do with the rest of that property? The biggest concern I have is water. Mallard Lakes one, Mallard Lakes two, and Mallard Lakes three are all fed from one community well on this property. I know it's cut out of that property, there's a small lot that's cut out for the well, but its physical location is within the boundaries of this twenty-six point one acre. How many more residences can that community well support? I wonder if anybody has done a study on that, and I also wonder if anybody's done a study on where these septic tanks are gonna be. I own the crest of that hill, and part of that property up next to Stony Fork Road is fairly level and flat, the entire rest of it slopes back toward the community well, so I have a concern there. I have a concern about giving up the nature of that entire subdivision that Joe Daves and Pauline Daves implemented. I knew Pauline Daves, I've lived there since nineteen ninety-two. Her intent, I spent many days in her house, her intent was to have five acre tracts with a single dwelling on each of those five acre tracts. This property is completely surrounded by Mallard Lakes Phase one and Phase two, I own property on both, and I surround it on both sides, Stony Fork Road on one, Dave's Road on the other side, and B on the other two sides. How's it going to look with single-family dwellings on a five acre lot on three hundred acres of land, and then right there on the corner in everybody's face is a bunch of single-family dwellings, I'm guessing to be on a one acre lot, and what's going to happen to that down the road? That community is just rife with people that have moved in there and wanted to do this, wanted to do that, they came in, they had a life change, they tried to make a change, then they had a divorce, they had a death, they had cancer, they moved away and left their mess for the rest of us to contend with. So I have concerns about all of that. The RUD one, as I understand it's trying to be rezoned as, is to maintain a rural setting. That has always been an agriculture setting. The people in that community enjoy their agricultural rights, they have horses, they have had livestock, I myself have run livestock there, including cattle, they like to exercise their Second Amendment rights, they like to exercise their rights as living in the country in a, not a rural setting, but an agricultural setting. There's hay taken off of that land in all of those lots around there. So what happens when you develop that and put nine, ten, in the future, twenty-six homes on there, and what kind of people does it attract? What does it do to the property values around there? I'm sure there's- I'm sure there's others in this community that share my concern. But my concerns are, as I've stated, maintaining one house, one residential dwelling on a five acre lot. What's going to happen with the water? What's going to happen with the infrastructure? Dave's Road has been a great road since Joe Daves unfortunately passed away. All those big heavy trucks that he ran down Dave's Road had nothing but potholes, no matter how many times they fixed it. And now, we're planning on putting a lot more traffic on that road, a lot more service on that road that it was not designed to take up. That whole road, that whole community, all of that stuff's agriculture in there. And the traffic jams, you know, next thing, am I going to have a red light down at my intersection? You know, you're trying to put in place something that it was never intended to be. I don't think Pauline could have ever foresaw that somebody was going to come in there and make it a trail park. That wasn't what she wanted. So, again, I've got a lot of concerns. I don't have a lot of answers to those concerns. But I can tell you, the intent was never for it to be what somebody's trying to make it to be. And whoever the developer is, is a very presumptive person indeed. Because they've already been in there with bulldozers, they've changed that radically in just the last couple of months, and it's not even been rezoned yet. So, somebody thinks that they've got the counsel in their pocket, or they've got a free ride. And they may indeed do that. But I'm not against people moving out into the country. I'm not against people having what I have, and I'm not against the property being rezoned. But I like the state agriculture. That's my statement. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak against? Well, I saw you in the plaid shirt first.
I don't think I can be quite as eloquent of Dave Williams on this, but I too have my concerns about this.
Name and address.
Alan Buchhock, 1543 Stony Fork Road. I bought into this property back in the mid-eighties because of the agricultural, you know, zoning at that time. At that time, they were sold as five acre lots. Now, unfortunately, this property is across the street from me. But every other property in Mallard Lakes is a five acre lot, and I like that. We let, we have the privateness around us, we have the quietness of the community, the horses running on several properties. And I too am concerned about going in and putting high-density housing on this 26 acres. I know it's only nine acres now, but where's it go from there? As well, this was never developed for high-density housing. I have a drainage adjustment that runs across my property that takes a good bit of the water from across the street. I believe that that's probably going to flood the lower half of my lot. It already fills up now when we have a lot of rain, and when we denude all that property over there and put driveways and houses on it, the water still has to go somewhere. That empties into a 29 acre pristine lake behind my house that everybody on that street shares. And in turn, I also worry about the welfare of that lake. But I do oppose this, and I just wanted to say my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a Chris? Is that your... No? You're, okay. Anybody else want... Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm Ernest Sisk. I live at 1766 Stony Fork Road. And I totally agree with what David has talked to you about today. And when I bought my property from Joe in 1990, it was set up for five acre tracts with one dwelling. And I am totally concerned about some, by going in there and redeveloping. And when I talked to Ms. Cox the other day, she said it was like a $152,000,000 home on a two and a half acre track for the nine, nine, it was a little over nine acres. And I'm also concerned about our well. We have a lot of people on that community well right now. So, what's that going to do to the water system out there and everything? But I'm totally against, because we don't know what's going to happen later on if we rezonate now to the RUD. Alright, what's going to happen later when they come back up and they want to rezonate that property again and put more houses on that property? And I am totally, I'm totally against this. I've enjoyed my, my land out there for 27 years. And I'm well acquainted with Dave and Alan and all of them out there, and even Mr. Perry across, Perry Brandon across the road, and I know about all the neighbors out through there. And I'm totally, sir, against, against all this at all. Because I mean, I bought my property for five acres because I didn't want a subdivision out there. And I totally agree with what Dave has said to you tonight, and I appreciate your attendance on it. And please, if, uh, if you will reconsider all this for the people out there that lives on Stony Fork and all that in there. And thank you for your time tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak against? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Teresa Henson, and I too, I live on Stony Fork Road. I've been on Stony Fork since 1989. I've raised my three children. And I now have 10 grandchildren that come to my house, and it's a very sacred place for them to be because they're not in the city, they're not in a subdivision, and it is a safe place that they can come and be. My concerns tonight is the same as the others that have spoken against this ruling. We are concerned for our well. We're concerned what our, what the well is going to do for our, for our individual homes. My lot, like the others, was zoned for five acres. I live on the lake as Chris does, and, um, and I'm concerned what the water's going to do for the lake as well. When I bought that property, the main reason I bought it was because of the way it was zoned. It was zoned for one owner, and it wasn't zoned to have one acre for one house. It was zoned specifically for one owner per five acre tract. That's what I wanted to live in the country. I still live there. And that's going to be my home until I go to my heavenly home. But I, I don't want to be in a subdivision with a house per acre. I, I too request that this chairboard will reconsider and oppose of what they're trying to do with our acreage. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Russell Henson. I live 1623 Stony Fork Road. And I too am opposed of this for the simple reason, there's, just like Dave, Teresa, everyone said, these are five acre tracts. This was meant to be in the country. It's not, it is a subdivision, but with five acre tracts, one home dwelling, that's it. No more. And the well, one well feeds all these homes. I personally know for my experience, I worked for Darby Well Drilling for 10 years. I've done a lot of service work on a lot of commercial wells. It will not, will not handle all that. Could drill another well, but that's not the problem. The runoff from everything that's above us is going to come right across the road, right into our 30 acre lake. And I fish in the lake. I eat fish out of that lake. It's spring-fed. But the problem, again, all the traffic would be on Dave's Road, Stony Fork Road. And who knows what's going to happen with, with the way you situate these homes? Again, there's, like Dave said, there's other properties over there. What's going to happen to those other properties? Will they be developed later? But again, I am totally opposed of this. I don't want it. We live in the country. This is a very, it's a very private setting, and I don't want, I just don't, you know, we enjoy our privacy. We enjoy being able to go in our front yard and play ball with our kids and our grandkids. And I just, again, I do not want this. I am totally opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else opposed? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Wendy South. I live at 1587 Stony Fork Road, and I'm here to oppose this rezoning. I, with the other neighbors, also have lived out here nearly 30 years. We chose this place to be in the country. We live on the lake, and I do have issues with the water and also the lake environmental. I don't want a subdivision there. I've raised my kids. We are a community, and we chose to be in the country because we like being on a five acre tract. This was set in our deed many years ago for one home on one land, on one five acre tract. I agree with each one of my neighbors that this is something that we would not, we would oppose to, and I hope that you understand that our concerns are that we want to be in the country and not be rezoned. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Has some people decided not to speak? Anybody in favor? Yes, sir.
My name is Scott McDuck, 312 Carly Lane in Rock Hill. And I'm hoping I can ease some of these questions that, that the concerns that people have in the neighborhood. I got a plat and some information for you to look at on that while I go over this. First of all, thank you for allowing everybody to speak. Obviously, people have concerns and everything. We tried to talk to some of the neighbors, but obviously, we couldn't talk to everybody, so I apologize for that.
Okay, that's, we got a public forum here. Show respect for everybody. I like you want to be respected.
Thank you. Okay. On the first page of the handout, it shows the plat of the proposed lots on the property that we want to rezone. The lot sizes range from 1.19 acres to 1.71 acres. We propose to build 1,800 to 2,400 square foot stick-built onsite homes. And there's actually seven lots, not 26 or anything like that, so it's, it's actually seven lots. And then, the 11 acre tract in the middle, we'd like to keep agriculture. And I can explain that later on. The proposed lot sizes and homes are consistent with other properties on and around Dave's Road. If you turn to the second page, the handout shows the subject property in yellow. The blue-colored properties are lots under five acres in size. The orange-colored properties are lots under two acres in size. The homes on Dave's Road raise, range from model home, mobile homes, to stick-built homes from 1,200 to 2,500 square foot in size, a wide variety of homes. So, you can see on that second page that there are a lot of five acre tracts surrounding it, but there are also a lot of one acre, two acre, up to five, so there's a wide variety around there. If you turn to the third page on the handout, it shows the distance from the property to other clusters of lots under two acres. I don't know if you want to call them subdivisions or anything, but where there's four or five or more acres, or lots that are under two acres. And you can see it's about 1,600 feet from the corner of the property to those other lots, going both ways, so they're fairly close. Some of the positives that we'd like to try to ease some of the worries that people have, there would only be two driveways on Dave's Road. The other five would be on Stony Fork, so there'd only be four, adding five, five driveways to Stony Fork Road. There'd be no financial burden to the county. There are two commercial wells on the 11 acres that are going to stay rezoned, the agricultural. One of the reasons that we kept that 11 acres was to make sure that the, the two wells, the commercial wells stayed on that property. There's already an easement going back there for the company that takes care of the wells. We didn't want to inhibit any of that. The question on what would happen with the rest of the 11 acres, the easement or the driveway that we have going back there is only big enough for one lot. It's not big enough for a road. We did that for another reason, so it never could be developed. So, that 11 acres could not, there, there's not, there could never be a road other than a driveway going back there, so it couldn't be, according to county rules, it couldn't be broken down into two lots, three lots, four lots, or anything. It's, it would have to stay that 11 acres because of the driveway going back to it. So, all in all, that would be eight lots, including that, that 11 acre lot that wouldn't be changed, changed from agriculture. The current zoning on the 20 acres with ag, it could be broke down into four or five acre lots, and that would allow eight mobile homes, two mobile homes on every five acre lot. So, that's eight mobile homes, eight houses, whatever you want to do on those four acre lots compared to the same number of homes that we're wanting to do. So, there's, there's no difference as far as the number of homes, the number of residencies. And again, we did that for a reason. Seven stick-built homes in the rezoned properties, the seven lots, would create a much higher property tax income for the county, and it would bring up the property values of the surrounding areas, surrounding homes. Rezoning the property would turn it to a better and higher use, and our proposed lots and homes would make it more consistent with the surrounding properties and other areas on Dave's Road. Some of the other questions that brought up, I made notes of. We have been mowing and they're cutting down trees for the brush and stuff like that to kind of, not clearing lots, because we were told not to do anything on, on the bare ground. So, we mowed all the brush and small trees down. There has been a lot of cleanup. The, the property was a mess. There was tires on the property. People had been using the property for a dump. We've hauled several loads of trash away. There was a foundation from the old construction site that was a concrete slab. We did rip that slab up. So, that's the dirt that they saw being done. What they'd done is they'd covered that slab up with dirt, so we cleaned the dirt off, cleaned that slab up. So, that was the bulldozing work or whatever that they thought it was. That, that wasn't in preparation for thinking that we had this in the pocket or however it was worded. That was just cleaning up our property. And I would think that hopefully, the neighbors would appreciate all the trash that we cleaned up and hopefully stop people from dumping in the future. I addressed the remaining 11 acres, so that can't be reduced anymore. The wells, DHEC is the one that says how many properties can be on that well. They're looking into that. We don't, we don't necessarily know if we can tie into those commercial wells, so we might actually have to drill our own wells on those lots. The septic permits have already been done. So, the, all, all, all seven lots plus the 11 acres at Perks. So, there's no, DHEC approved, DHEC has approved all of that. I guess that's about it. I hope I, I hope I eased some of the questions that were asked by everybody. And certainly, we don't want to make any enemies in the neighborhood. We, we've, we've gotten to know some of the neighbors, not, obviously not all of them. And, but we would gladly walk the land with the people and show them what we're doing. If they have any more questions or concerns, they could talk to me afterwards. And thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me?
Uh, we just, we just listen. Uh, we just, we just listened. Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, counsel. My name is Dana Simmons. I live at four-eight-four Dave's Road. If you look at this property, my house is this house right here, right around the yellow property, where all these houses are going to be built. I find it very interesting that all these people around us have said something about knowing their neighbors. I've not met one of these people since I've lived there. Scott and his father are planning to develop this property. They're doing the county a service. That was nothing but a dump land, nothing but brush surrounded my house. Now, they have cleaned up chunks of concrete, tires that are bigger than me as I stand. They're doing a good thing here. They're not trying to take away things from all of these people. My house is not sitting on five acres. I don't have a problem with these houses being built. They're not trying to build a subdivision here. They're just trying to build some other houses for other families to live in. Face it, Rock Hill, there's no more place for people to build there. So where are people going to come? York County. We want them to be happy here, just like we are now, now that we live in this county. Please, allow these folks. They have planned. They're taking every effort that they can to make things right, building these houses. Please, allow them to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else for? Yes, sir. Welcome. I didn't recognize you sitting back there.
My name is Richard Shotwell. I live at thirty-thirty-one Shandon Road, Rock Hill, which is in York County, which is entirely on, completely the other side of the county from what we're talking about here today. But to alleviate some of the fears of the other people's conversations here, I plan to build there, if I can get one of those one-acre lots. I plan to build about a two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-thousand-dollar property. That's what I'm going to sell before I move over there. I don't have any mobile homes, never lived in one. Lady over here mentioned about her family and her children. I'd love to live next door to my wife, to my daughter and my son-in-law, who own one-point-seven-acre property, which really was the Dave's property, which after arson, they built a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar home on. I'd just love to live next door to them, if that would be all right. And have a life with them in the future, what limited future I have, since I guess I'm getting to be an older gentleman. But I live in a very nice community now. I practice very high Christian values, and I hope I could be an addition to the communities out there and the churches. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody else want to speak? Yes, sir.
Thank you, counsel. My name is Mike Simmons. I live at four-eight-four Dave's Road. I'm a new citizen to this community. I've gotten to know Scott and his father and have learned about the project of what they're planning to do. I totally support everything that they're doing. I agree with my wife Dana, who spoke with you a moment ago. They have done a lot of cleanup in this area and cleaned up the, the property that was there. They are trying to provide a way for more people to live in the area and, and not bringing in mobile homes. That, that was my large concern, was mobile homes being brought in around my property. I ask that you do consider to allow this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in favor? Do I have a motion to close?
Let's close.
I heard a second. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Time for a new motion.
I move to approve, second reading.
Second.
Okay, discussion, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, they, I, uh, uh, and I, I more than some believe that you can wait till third reading to, to vote no. And I, and that, I'm not committing to voting for it on third, on, on third reading, but having seen a lot of this stuff before, it could, it could definitely be worse than what they're, they're, they're doing. And I think it, and it sounds like it's an improvement over the property, but the, the, the couple of problems that, that I would like to see solved before then is, is this, I mean, this, this would be great if it's, it's developed this way, but this is not, just change the zoning doesn't ensure that this is what is built. But not changing the zoning, you can invite the eight mobile homes and, and other stuff that, that he was referring to. But I also wanted, I guess the other concern is the, the empty, the, the land with the two wells. I'd like to, to see how that's addressed in the future. Is this pond the one they fish in?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, uh, so I think there's, there's definitely some, some benefits. I mean, if somebody else owns that piece of property and it's a, and it's a neighborhood amenity, there's definitely some benefits that could come from neighborhood and developer interaction at this point. And we could come out with, with, with a long-term plan that everybody hopes for. If, whether there's been, you know, the, the effort to talk to each other, we could, and step that up and make sure it happens. But I, but I see, I mean, rather than vote against it on second reading, I, I see the potential for a better solution than leaving it as AGC.
Mr. Johnson.
Our staff approved this on the basis that it's consistent with the comprehensive land use plan and that it is consistent with the character of the surrounding area. It was then denied by the Planning Commission. I'm not sure why. And it, that's not told to us.
But I, I asked. It was an increased curb cuts as, as part of my, excuse me, it was increased curb cuts as part of, when I asked staff why. And I had assumed that they were five-acre lots like everything else. The, it looks like what they're drawing, the frontage is going to appear five-acre lots, but it's not, they're not five-acre lots. So it can be, this can make it look like it fits in your neighborhood, whereas leaving it AGC can make it look like it definitely does not. But yeah, the reason the denial was, was to not add to curb cuts, but this has already got curb cuts because it's got a bunch of skinny five-acre lots.
All right. Certainly, this can be addressed by, as part of, if this is approved at third reading, to approve the plat, thereby locking these lots in at the exact sizes as they're shown on this. And it would require to come back before council to change those lot sizes. That is something that could be done there. I, I say this in general. If we're not going to pass things that are consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, if we deny this, we should amend the land use plan to reflect that. If we're not willing to allow these types of things, we need, we need to say it out loud. Because if you own property and you look at our land use plan, which we spent about two years developing, and it says this is something that belongs here, in a way, that's the green light to the guy who owns this property that, yeah, this is something I can do. So I, I, I would say that, just as a general comment to counsel, that if we're, if this at some point is denied, I really think we need to go back and look at the land use plan and, and start saying, all right, well, we didn't mean this in this area, and take a harder look and, and withdraw some of those areas. But I will certainly support this at second reading.
I'll just go back this way. Mr. Winkler, I saw your hand first.
I have concerns with this. I will support it on second reading, but I would like to see the, the gentleman who's wanting to develop it to meet with these other citizens. I, in, in first glance, when I looked at it, it looked like, okay, it didn't fit because of the one-acre lots. But as I looked at, that's, and I apologize for those of you that were talking a little earlier when I was over here messing with my iPad. I was trying to bring up the package that council had sent us that had the layout and the zoning and everything around everywhere so that I could see that and see how it compared to everything else. I wasn't ignoring y'all. I was trying to find documentation that was sent to us last week to look at that. And so I have mixed emotions about it at this point. In some ways, it's, it's not necessarily more curb cuts, but the smaller acres are, smaller lots are off to the side a little bit. So I would like to see, as we ask from time to time, that, that the citizens get together and the, the people and work out something that can be brought to us that we can support without these concerns and mixed emotions. Because there's no guarantee that it passes on third reading just because we get through the second reading.
Mr. Roddy.
Well, we, we see a lot of rezonings come forth, and we see a lot of neighbors speak for, speak against. And like Mr. Winkler has said, we like to see the community get together, work with the builder, work with the neighbors to bring us something. And it takes us out of the equation because, as you can see, these, these rezonings and these type cases get very, very, um, very touchy. Because we see neighbors on one hand, we see someone looking to do something with their property on the other hand. And it, it really puts, puts us in a real tough spot. And we always like to encourage that interaction between the builder and the community because I would much rather you guys bring something in and say, hey, we've worked out our differences. This is what we like. This is what we can go forth with. This is what he can live with. This is what the community can live with. And it, 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 it works better for everyone involved. Having said that, I did have a couple of questions. I hear, I heard something about being able to put mobile homes on the property now. How many can go there now if we don't do anything with the property? How many mobile homes can sit on this property right now? That's the question.
Two or five-acre tracts. So it would be eight.
So we can get eight. Without rezoning, without rezoning, we can look up to?
Here's the expert.
Yeah, this is.
With AGC.
She's over this department.
He is correct. The developer's correct. At AGC, he can theoretically subdivide five-acre tracts, and I think he said it could yield four, and you're allowed two mobile homes. So that would be eight mobile homes.
So we're basically looking at what fits better in this area? Eight mobile homes or the option to do seven lots? And we're looking to put single-family residential homes? Let, let me finish my question. So we, we subdivided, and with the intentions of, can we not set restrictions to say single-family stick-built? If we do this, could this be part of a conditional?
Yes, you can. RUD one does not allow mobile homes. So you don't have to worry about that as a condition. But you can restrict it more to stick-built homes.
Yeah, I was trying to make sure that we cleared it up because he thought maybe once we rezoned, he could still put mobile homes. That's not the case. So, and so I guess my question, I would love to hear from the neighbors to help me make a decision. It's not my, it's not my area. I would like to, to make a good, well-informed decision to support Ms. Cox. What would you rather see? The mobile homes or single-family stick-built homes or possibly a modular, whatever we could, we could do? So that's what I want to hear from you guys. You can feel free to email me, call me. I want to hear from you guys because this is your community. We want to make sure we put what's best for the community there as well as what's livable for someone looking to come in and utilize with.
Just go up on the county site, and you can see his emails, address. That'd be easy.
So that, that's, that's one, one question. And I like the fact that the community well may not be an option. It may be private wells. So I would like to kind of have that in my, my back pocket to kind of know kind of which way this is potentially going to go. And it may take some ease off some of the neighbors who are concerned that the private community well may not be enough. So if we could have that answer probably coming to us as soon as you get it, that, that, I think that'll help a lot of us up here.
Ms. Cox.
This is my district, and, and I want to thank the folks that have come out and expressed their concerns about this. I have gotten some emails on this as well. I want to let you know how this started is that I did receive, after the Planning Commission made their decision, I did receive a call from the developer, the McTucks, who came and, and met with me and showed me the plans. And I said, you need to go talk to the people in the community. That's the number one thing you need to do. They are very professional when they talk to me. They showed a plat, talked to them and said, look, we're, we're struggling in this county right now to make sure that we aren't inviting in additional residential, it doesn't pay for itself because right now, we're in a situation where we're backwards. We're sixty percent residential to forty percent commercial, and, and we need to do what we can to fix that. So I sent them, basically, I was also told that at the Planning Commission level, part of the concern and why the Planning Commission voted against this was because they were given information from staff, or at least this is what was reported to me, that staff had told them that, that the lots out there were all five-acre lots, which was not necessarily the case when you look at the plan in front of you today. So I originally said, look, I think, I think what you need to do, and I think what all of our developers need to do, and what I hear the other council members saying up here is go meet with the people out there who are going to be affected. Go knock on their doors, make sure you explain to them what's going on. And it looks to me like that hasn't happened as much as we would have liked it to. In my opinion, this is second reading. We still have one more reading. I'm leaning towards it not passing. I am one vote. I've ridden out on the road, and when you look at the similar properties, it doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't look like it fits. With that said, there is the danger that if there is a way to defeat this, that what you, what you're looking at is either eight mobile homes existing, where they, they can do that without council approval, or would you rather have eight stick, stick-built homes that are similar to the type of homes that are being built out in that area? To me, you know, that is a question, and I think, I agree with, with Councilman Roddy. Here's an opportunity for you guys to talk before third reading. And I encourage you to communicate, not just reach out to the council members. Go communicate with the developers. I, I'm holding, I told you this when you came and talked to me. I am not in favor of these types of developments. I am not in favor of these types of developments. You're going to have to go out and do your own work to prove to the community that this is a good thing. And it's unfortunate, it sounds like that we're not there yet, but maybe this is, this is the opportunity for that to happen. And I'll certainly walk out and give, give you folks my card so that you know how to contact me. But I think the real work needs to be done between now and next reading. But, but in this case, I have real concerns, and, and I can tell you, I don't, I don't think I'm in favor of third reading.
Ms. Love?
Um, I'm not going to vote for it. And I'm going to tell you why. It looks all too familiar for me, because I represent a district, Clover, South Carolina, that looks very similar to, to what you have now, five-acre lots. And I think that we have to preserve as much of that as we possibly can. And I think that, um, we had a, council had a workshop, and in that workshop, the goal was for us to be able to look at the comprehensive land use plan and see what worked for our districts and what didn't work for our districts. And I would like to have a follow-up to that. And one of the things that, if, if I were representing this district, because I have very similar things, we identify on a lot of things, but one of the things that I would want to say is that this is, to me, and I was on the comprehensive land use committee for a year and a half. So, um, I'm going to tell you firsthand that we didn't look at every little road. You know, we didn't look at Stony Fork Road. So, um, we looked at areas. And if this is not right for that area, then the comprehensive land use plan needs to be updated to be what is right. And if mobile homes are not right, that needs to be taken care of at that time also. So I just, I feel like, um, I don't want any, I don't want the people of York County to have to beg me to do what's right. I stood right there for a year and a half also, begging council to do something for me that didn't get done, and I drive through it every day, at least twice. So I am going to side with the people on this. I will absolutely not support it.
Well, let me just add my last little comment to all this. Being in another council member's district, I respect their opinion and try to stay out of things. But when I listened to the points made, Mr. Johnson asked one question, which I noticed the staff supported. And then Mr. Williams noted that he was told, well, curb cuts were concerned by some on the planning commission. But yet, on the next zoning, curb cuts is one reason why the staff advised against it.
Correct.
So I, this variation in opinions kind of bothers me at times. To be blunt, as chairman, I'm a little concerned about, and of course, the planning commission's under no obligation to abide by staff's decision, but they are the experts, and there seems to be a lot of times where there's not meshing of the minds there, that something I may have to look into as chairman. But, um, the fact that, when you look at the potential for conditions to say, stick-built, to say, certain-sized lots, if I was living, and I grew up on the south side of town, I'm an old country boy, I get it. I mean, as I've gotten older, I've gone away from thinking about moving to the coast to having fifty, sixty acres out in the country. So I get it. But if I'm looking at land that was a trash pit and dumped on, and they could stick trailer park, or trailer homes there right now, versus the potential to have conditions where you could have two, three hundred thousand dollar homes, nice ones, and, in other words, enhance your real estate value? You know, I, I just kind of, obviously, I'm, I'm going to support this, because I just don't see the negatives right now, how you would lose. I really don't. But I might be, my mind's always open, so I'll listen to what's said the next go around. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
One, one, uh, next item. Reson, well, public hearing, consider second reading of... Okay, hold public hearing, consider second reading, case number seventeen twenty-eight, to resolve from AGC to RUD 1 at Atkins Road in the York Community. Anybody here want to speak against? Yes, sir. And as you probably know by now, name and address.
All right. My name's Don Davis. I live at five ninety-one Atkins Road. I've been there since nineteen eighty-one. This parcel of land, it's twenty-seven point four acres. It was to be divided up into three tracks. Eleven point two, and then a five-acre track broken up into four acre and a quarter tracks. The acre, the five-acre tracks is what they want, the five-acre track is what they want to change to RUD 1. As you mentioned earlier, the staff recommended and denied it on their recommendation, and then the planning board approved it three to two, with four members of the planning board missing for that vote. So there was a limited number of planning board guys there at that meeting. The summary is, in changing that to agriculture, or the, it was that, the curb cuts, and I don't look and think so much about the number of curb cuts, as I do the amount of traffic coming off of that property. If you've got six curb cuts, or six homes there, or eight homes, it mentions you can go up to ten homes the way it's zoned right now. But we'll leave it at six, that's what they're asking for. And most families have two vehicles. That's twelve vehicles. And that's, if you've got one road or six roads, you've still got twelve cars in and out of that, off of Atkins Road. And if you've ever been down Atkins Road, it's a forty-five plus, and it's plus. It's a double yellow line all the way from one end to the other, and I've been passed many times on that road. And where they're wanting to cut these curbs is down in the bottom, as the road comes to across the little bridge, and it's a blind spot, and they're wanting to put this property and these houses right there in that blind spot. So it's, it's the most dangerous spot on that road that it could possibly be. The staff also looked at the amount of traffic on Shiloh Road, which is a neighboring road, and it had twenty-eight hundred daily trips on it, and Highway forty-nine had six thousand four hundred trips on it. They did not, there was no survey on Atkins Road for the amount of traffic that traveled through there. But Atkins Road sits between forty-nine and one sixty-one, and it is a cut-through. There's large trucks that go through there, there's a bridge on that road, it's eight axles, eight thousand pounds per axle, thirty-three ton trucks. And I would venture to say that there's trucks that go through there that are bigger than that. A lot of the county trucks go through there, the disposal trucks and stuff go through there and go across that bridge. I don't know the size of them, but there is a lot of traffic on that road. There's a lot of elderly people that live on that road. Now that I'm sixty-five, I'm in that class. So there's a lot of eighty-year-old people that live on that road that grew up in that area, been there all their lives, that are accustomed to pulling to their mailbox and getting their mail out of their mailbox. That is a very dangerous thing to do now, but that is a habit for them with the amount of traffic that travels up and down that road. I'm not condoning what they do, but I'm just saying, those are the type of things on that rural road that happen. Speaking again to the curb cuts, they were wanting to put six curb cuts, two for each parcel, the two eleven acres plus the four for the, uh, acre and a quarter lots. I did consider meeting with the realtor and having a community meeting. We did not get around to that. I did speak to a lot of people in the community, and they are here, a lot of them are here tonight. The, as far as major roads on both sides of Atkins Road, you've got forty-nine, one sixty-one, and major collectors on Campbell Road, on, on Atkins Road, a collector, you know, is funneling traffic to Atkins Road. Campbell Road funnels traffic to Atkins Road, Old Limestone, Param Road, and Shiloh Road, and all these are recognized in your, the plan you have discussed tonight as collector roads. The, uh, the other thing is, this land, the gentleman talked earlier about his property having to be surveyed, uh, multiple times because of water access. This property, eleven acres of it border Little Allison Creek, and it's considered in the flood zone. And looking at the county policy, that's a hundred-foot buffer, because that road, or that creek, is considered a perennial, uh, water flow to, uh, Lake Wiley. And I know you spoke earlier about wanting to develop something for Lake Wiley, but here we are, wanting to put property along an Allison Creek that feeds into Lake Wiley, without looking at the buffer zones, because there is some roads and stuff being cut into it. It also says that prior to that land being, uh, sold, that a survey cell provisioned at the plot zoning showing the buffer zone for that area. The five acres of land, if you don't have, I can show you the five acres on this map if you'd like to see it, and there's a drainage in there that meets this storm runoff provisions of the county policy that run into Allison Creek. So that takes up a great big area that's going to require a lot of deeding and resurveying to keep that stormwater from running down into Allison Creek. It's a natural drain, it's been there, it's over five feet deep, and several, eight or ten feet wide in some places. And it's a natural runoff, it's been there for hundreds of years, it's going to run right through that five acres of land. So, uh, I'll say, I guess, uh, I don't need to say aye, but no. Thank you.
I think we got that drift. Anybody else opposed? Yeah, either one of y'all first.
How y'all doing?
How are you?
I'm Randy McGill. I live at four eighty-six Atkins Road. We're kind of the newcomers on the street. We, um, we moved into my grandparents' old house, which also was my great aunt and uncle's house, and members of our family through blood or marriage have lived in that house since eighteen ninety-eight. And, of course, the house built in about eighteen eighty-one. We came up here from the lower part of the state and hadn't still gotten used to red mud or anything, but probably never will. But as, you know, up here, we, I don't know, the thing we've enjoyed most about it is the agricultural setting. I remember coming up when I was a little kid, going to see my great aunt and uncle. You could almost take a nap in Atkins Road and not get run over. Of course, everything in York County has changed since then. Some for the better, and maybe some not for the better. Sometimes we need to hold on to some of these things that we've got, you know, the agricultural part of it and everything, and need to recognize that, I think. You know, our grandkids love coming up, looking at the cows, the horses, you know, having wild turkeys in the yard, and all that sort of stuff. Occasionally, get to see a few deer before the hunters get to them. But it's been, you know, it's a real blessing for us to be up here. We, we enjoy the, you know, having land around us. We've, we've got about fifteen acres in our tract that was part of the original Atkins Farm that the road's named for. And the house, of course, is the Atkins Farm house. You know, I, I'm not opposed to folks coming in and doing development and new stuff and everything, but a lot of families on that road, and I think we've hinned about all of them from blood or marriage. And, you know, it, it does, it has that rural agricultural feel about it, and that's one of the kind of blessings about places like that. We don't have that many of them in our part of the county anymore, it seems. They're disappearing all the time. And it's kind of nice to hang on to a little bit of agricultural land, get out there to see the people farming, you know, cutting hay, horses, cows, whatever. But, you know, that, that's the thing that really makes us feel comfortable up here, that we can get out and see that kind of stuff. Our kids come up, and the grandkids come up from the lower part of the state, and they live in a development in, near Lexington, South Carolina. And for them, this is like a big treat, you know, they get to go up and, wow, they get to go to the farm, you know, that's a neat thing. And it's, it's, it's really great to see the look on there, let's go feed the cows, you know, you know, the little five-year-old and two-year-old both, out there calling cows and horses and stuff and everything. So I don't know, it's, um, it's one of those things that, you know, having agricultural land is really a special thing, and there are a lot of places that are losing it fast, and we just don't want to see it change. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, very much. And I'm, I saw him, well, you want ladies, a gentleman?
Do you speak of a lady?
Oh, okay.
Get them hung.
Hi there. My name is Jennifer Dockery, and I live at six fifty Atkins Road. I live at the property that is directly across from where this proposed development is going in. I am also a descendant of the homestead that Randy just spoke of, and my grandmother was in Atkins on this road. I would like to know how on earth this land is going to sustain all these homes that are going to go in there, and what is going to happen going forward. I invite all of you to come and sit in my yard during rush hour, or any busy traffic time during the day, and see how much traffic goes up and down this road. We take our lives into our hands going across the road to get our mail. Right across the road. I live right on the road. I'm probably the closest to the road. In the wintertime, when the weather is bad, we've pulled many people up from that creek, I mean, pulling them up from the bridge there, because it's very icy down there. It's also very dangerous there. There is a curve there, as Don talked about. There's also a curve coming around from the other way, right in front of my house. So, um, I have some very serious concerns as to what's going to happen here. What's going to happen in the future, too? Because there are some older people that live on this road. And what's going to happen when they go? And what's going to happen when this land gets sold to developers who don't care about this land, and don't care about the rural, the agricultural area that we still have? I lease my pasture to someone who has cows there. He also takes his life into his hands some days, just trying to come in there and deliver hay to this, to his cattle, and pulling out, too. This is during the middle of the day at times. So we do have tractors that still go up and down this road. We have, I have donkeys. I'm concerned what's going to happen to my donkeys with all these people living across the road. And, um, it's just, there's been a lot of changes going on, and I am not against change. I moved here from Chicago thirty-two years ago, but I also grew up in, I did not grow up in this area. My mother's family was in this area, and I've been coming here since the sixties. And I've observed this creek, Little Allison Creek, and I've seen a great deal of erosion that's just happened through natural occurrences. You start putting more houses in there, and where this person is already building in a road, he's just building in a road. He's only a few feet from the creek. So are we going to allow that to happen? Are we just, we don't care about this creek anymore? You want to develop Lake Wiley. This creek used to flow into Lake Wiley, and we've gone through some extreme droughts just from what is coming down from the mountains. So this is just the beginning, and I have some very serious concerns as to how we're going to deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. She did good. Anybody else opposed? I didn't hear you.
She sure did. Mexican baby.
Could I add something to what I was saying?
Yes, sir.
The same person owns the one track of the eleven point two acres that owns the five acres. So I'm, I'm also concerned that if he gets this five-acre track, will he come back and try and develop the eleven point two acres? The other eleven point two acres has already been sold, and that's the person putting the road, road in to a different family. But the LLC that originally bought this, I had trouble trying to find who actually owned it, but the LLC has transferred it into some of their own names with inside the LLC. So I'm just still concerned of what will happen to the remainder of the land that's
Anybody else opposed? Uh, how about four?
Good evening. Tim Heeline, twenty-six seventy-four Cozy Cove Drive. Tough group tonight. I've got a lot to say. I want to tell you, my dad told me when I was a young man, God give you two ears and one mouth. He wants you to listen a lot more than you talk. And I would love to get with the neighbors. We're very transparent, hiding nothing. This, this land, the way it lays, it's twenty-seven point, I think, four or six acres. The two eleven point two acre tracks you're referring to, they're going to be deed restricted to one house forever. The fellow that owns the land, his son is buying the other track. That other track, they're contingent upon rezoning. The road that's going, it's a driveway, so, to get timber. That's staying agricultural right there. That's not ever going to get...
What's going in now?
Yeah, it's a driveway. Oh, I'm sorry, it's a driveway to get the timber. So there's only ever, ever going to be one house built on each eleven-acre track. Right now, without having to come to, in front of council because of the zoning for all of it, we could make five, five-plus acre tracks. You could put two mobile homes on those. Have zero interest in doing anything like that. I don't believe in density. I'm anti-HOA. There's a demand for the product that what we have. I was a partner in Old York Farms up the road several years ago when that got done. But this, this property here, the way it lays, I met with staff originally about doing what we wanted to do. They suggested putting in a short driveway. The topo of it and the creek you were talking about doesn't lend for that. And I, I've done a lot of rezonings for this kind of properties. And I look at land as what, someone selling this land, they're not asking agricultural prices for it. They're asking developable prices. Everything keeps getting piled on the consumer, and that can't keep happening. Just putting a road in for something like that, it's too cost prohibitive. That land is all trees. It's primarily going to stay that way. The four lots, we're, we're talking about six driveways instead of five that concurrently go there, and only going to have six houses total because of the deed restrictions. I would love to meet with the neighbors if, if you wanted to table this till we met, so I could answer everyone's concern. Again, we're very, very transparent. Rick Land is the owner of that land. His son Tanner is buying the eleven and a half acres. Rick Land and I own the old golf course just up the road. Wallet tells you to do density in there. We're not doing density. We're making five-acre, ten-acre, twelve-acre lots in there, restricting them to one house. Address a couple of other things. A blind spot on that road, I've been up and down that road a lot. Mr. Joe, we, we've, we've known each other for years from when I, from when I did Old York. But if you look on that survey, that road's straight. It does have that creek in it. Where this, where this land is, that road is straight. What's that?
Road's cross bitch curve at the middle, obviously, straight.
Again, I would, I would love to, I would love to meet with you and tell you what, what we're, would like to do.
Just try to talk to us, okay?
Okay.
Get in conversations with the crowd behind you.
Anyhow, when I, a couple of things I had on here was, you know, the land use plan is, is a, it's a great target, but it's, it's not perfect. Just like you said, that little road, you didn't have that looked on, but it should be looked on. And where, there is some places on that land use plan that, that I, I look at it quite a bit. I'm like, boy, that, that doesn't fit. So I think it'd be great if there was a provision to, I guess that's what this process is, is to look at those kind of deals. Also, walking that land in the land use plan, when, when you've got to walk land to really see what it's best to be used, and especially when people sell. I own a real estate company. I get calls all the time, people wanting to sell their land for a lot of money. And I think what I try and do if I get involved with it is see what, okay, what's the lesser of, of several evils? I support what Scott's doing here tonight because of what could happen there, and they do, they're, um, I, I'm, I think the people should be tickled that that's who's got that land. And... do, they're, I think the people should be tickled that that's who's got that land. But the houses that Rick would want to build there is going to be in the three hundred to three fifty range. They're going to be on an acre and a half, or acre and a quarter, not a quarter acre, where you see that going in a lot. Houses down the road south are in that two, two fifty range and the houses north are in the, you know, seven hundred to a million and a half by Old York Farms. The frontage, there's eight hundred and forty feet of frontage, I believe. Those two eleven-acre tracks are going to have a hundred foot of frontage. That's the minimum. They're just going to be a driveway. Those lots, those four lots, proposed lots would be a hundred and sixty foot wide. That's way above average. It could be a hundred feet wide, but that's too, that's too small. The lots have already been de-hec approved for septic systems. They'd each be on an individual well and, again, there'd be no HOA then, there's just not going to be, and you're right, the gentleman mentioned, say, two cars per house, that's twelve a day. That's not a lot of cars, added cars to that road.
You don't drive it?
I drive it quite a bit. That was about it. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in favor? Anybody else want to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Close.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Well, I'd like to discuss it. How do I word that? Motion for discussion? Okay.
No, we've got to have a motion and we have a discussion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to...
I mean, even if you defer or whatever.
I want to make a motion to deny and discuss this.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, got a second. Discussion, Ms. Love.
Well, I think based on the fact that most of the neighbors are against this, I've talked to a few of them and we have a planning commission that has voted to, three to two for approval, but four of the members were not there. That bothers me and the staff recommendation is denial. So, what's going to change my mind will be Tim getting with the neighbors and y'all coming back or letting me know in the meantime that something has changed.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, the, I guess, I would like to address the, the planning commission's, I'd like to address the staff's differing recommendations on the curb cuts. One, the one we just talked about was an area that looks like this. I know you probably can't see it, but when you add six curb cuts to an area that has a hundred, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference, which that's us having a policy but then looking at the, at the land and then adjusting our policy to that. Six curb cuts fits in naturally with the area. This area looks more like the other side of the road where there's no, there's a bunch of big wide, there's not a bunch of little curb cuts and I think Mr. Heeline's right that you just add twelve, at this point it's not going to add a whole lot, but the problem there is, is you've got a whole bunch more little sections that you could add twelve cars to that eventually would clog the road up, which is why staff is recommending, is trying to keep the curb cuts down to a minimum as well. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with the differing recommendations. I think our staff does a, does a great job, but, and because of that recommendation, that's why I'm in favor of this motion. I don't have a problem seeing, you know, what they could work out, but I don't, I don't know how you fix that problem talking to the neighbors, but increasing all those curb cuts.
Mr. Winkler?
I am always, most of the time I've always spoken in favor of trying to have the developer, as I did a little earlier, meet with residents and try to work things out. I've always found Mr. Heeline to be very open and very good to work with people. You know, it does bother me, staff said denial for curb cuts, but the entire acreage, including the two in the back, could be split up to five, five-acre tracks basically, which would be five curb cuts and we're doing six here, so the curb cuts aren't a lot of difference as far as curb cuts. So, I had concerns with it. I was hoping, my intent was to get through this reading just like we did the last one, see if the developer and the neighbors could work out something before it came back for third reading. And for that reason, and also wanted to talk to staff more to get some more information on their denial and their reasoning for this, because, again, I just think it bears a little more discussion, so I will not be supporting the denial.
Fair enough. Yeah, Mr. Johnson?
I guess I'm confused perhaps by the motion. The motion is to deny and we vote to deny, this is dead. This doesn't get a third reading, they don't get to talk, they don't get to iron out their differences. If the goal is to have them possibly sit down and iron out their differences, then the motion is to defer. I just want to make sure as we move forward that we understand exactly what we are doing. I would certainly support them sitting down and meeting. I tend to go with staff, the planning staff. They denied this, you know, and unless I saw something at third reading, I would vote to deny this, based on, I vote with staff. I don't, I'm not saying I don't pay attention to what the planning commission does, but I tend to vote more with what the staff recommends on these issues. So, I'm leaning that way, but I certainly always like groups to have that opportunity. I'm kind of like Mr. Williams, I don't mind killing something at third if I was going to, if I was willing to do it at the second or even first. So, but I would oppose ending this now barring them the opportunity to try to work out a compromise, but I would, I certainly, if a compromise can't be reached and staff doesn't change their opinion at all, I don't see how I could support it at third reading, so.
So, you're saying you're going to oppose the motion?
As it stands right now.
And you want to keep the motion as it is?
Well, I can change the motion. But, so, I can withdraw the motion, yes, thank you. So, but what is the difference in, what's the difference in deferring it and passing it for second reading? Does a deferral make it, you still have two more readings?
You could do it, I mean, it's...
Still have to withdraw the motion.
Yeah, so, so, can I just withdraw my motion and make the motion that we approve it tonight in hopes that they will work something out?
Who gave the second motion?
I did.
Okay, you okay with that, Mr. Williams?
Well, I mean, I'll withdraw my second, but somebody else can second that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Got the new motion. Anybody else want to speak?
I have.
Mr. Roddy?
I'm glad Mr. Johnson cleared up. If we, now there's no more conversation, that was going to be my first point. My second point was, we can't help who makes it to these planning commission meetings who don't, you know, if we're not going to consider the passage of a vote at the planning commission, then maybe we need to change it to a certain number of votes are needed to come to us in the form of approval. Just because four members didn't make it, you know, we don't know if they would have voted for it or against it, so we can't just try to factor that party in. And I heard Tim say something about a hundred and sixty-foot wide lots, which otherwise could be smaller, you know, he went with a bigger lot size. And if I heard correctly also, we're talking about going from five lots to six lots. Is that where we're, is that's going to be the big change on the one up front from five to six?
One up front, just five acres, we're going to four lots.
Five acres to four lots? Okay. And did I hear some discussion about what could possibly go to the back and surrounding this property? What do we got going on? Because I heard some mention of other areas that's surrounding this property. What are we, why are we bringing other issues into this rezoning?
You know the one you're...
Because in his plan, he mentions developing the other two acres.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're out of, you shouldn't speak out of...
Well, can I get Audra or someone to come?
Yeah, Audra, are you still here, ma'am?
Tim, you certainly been bringing us the tough ones here lately.
There's a lot going on in the room.
Kind of clear, kind of what's the total scope of this little area here that we're discussing?
My understanding of what the developer's going to do, he's just going to rezone five acres and the public's concern is if you're only rezoning five acres and you have all this remainder, does that mean in the future he's going to then come back and rezone and subdivide in stages? And I think Mr. Heeline explained that there's not the intent to do that, that his development's limited at five.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up by just saying that I appreciate what Ms. Love did because when the staff and the council member both agree, I was just going to go with the original motion, but I think it's more than fair-minded to allow it to be further discussed to see if, to see if something can be worked out for everybody's benefit. That being said, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item. Old Business, Council to Consider Hospitality Tax Funding for Christmasville. So, we had a motion to suspend the rules and that was accepted, so John, I'm going to let you come forward and go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, my name is John Reinhardt and I live at twenty seventy-five Courtney Road, York, South Carolina. What is being handed out to you is information concerning our two thousand sixteen calculations for Christmasville. And let me just give you a little background. I was born here in York County. Many of you don't remember or do remember because you're of age to remember the St. Phillips Hospital. I was born there, grew up in Rock Hill, graduated from Rock Hill High School. That was before Northwestern Chad. Went away to college, came back to start my business in the community that I love and we've been in business here, starting our forty-second year in the real estate business. I live in the county and I am deeply concerned about the citizens of York County and several of us, many of us who volunteer for this festival, over three hundred volunteers, by the way, each year. I've got, I have with me a couple of guys who have been involved with the festival almost since the beginning and that's Alan Miller, who's a member of the Board of Governors, and Toy Ray. They're with me here and they're welcome to address you if you allow them the opportunity later as well. But in...
They said the motion suspended the rules for you, so...
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll keep it to myself then. The, a little about the Christmasville Festival, like I said, about ten years ago, a group of us got together to form the festival and as a result, the festival has grown and we have had a lot of participation from folks, not only those coming into York County, but a lot of our citizens in York County participate in this festival. And I want to share with you a few numbers. First of all, there were five hundred guests surveyed for this that you have in front of you. They were surveyed on foot and through social media and the final assumptions are based upon a total of seventy-five thousand guests. Forty thousand at the Christmasville Festival alone, thirty-five thousand more at the parade. The purpose of Christmasville was to better understand our customers, the purpose of this document was for us to better understand our Christmasville customer and target our marketing dollars and to support grant requests for the ATAX and H-TAX. Christmasville's distance travel, if you flip over to the third page, you'll see that it's a color graph of how far people came to visit Christmasville. One to ten miles, forty-six point three percent of the folks were within a ten-mile radius. Twenty to thirty miles, nine point nine and twelve point nine nine and more than thirty miles, folks coming in from out of town, there were thirty-one percent of the folks that attended Christmasville came from out of town. The next graph shows you what the age group that was surveyed that were visiting. It's interesting, our largest number, thirty-five percent of the folks were aged thirty to thirty-nine. Y'all, that is fantastic because if you go over to the next page, you'll see how many people were in each party. So, this thirty to thirty-nine group had an average of five-plus people in a party. So, that means mom, dad, the kids, the three kids, our mom and the three kids, because I bumped into one young lady and I'll just say this as a sidebar, as a member of the Board of Governors, we, almost everything at Christmasville is without cost. We have worked to provide a festival that our community can come to without having to bring a pocketful of money. Now, there are a few rides that we have to charge for, so we have armbands that can be purchased. Those armbands can be purchased for around ten dollars and they can ride any of the rides. The Board of Governors are given a pocketful of those bands, which we hand out during the festival. When we identify a family, perhaps a single mom with a couple of, two or three kids, four kids, we just give them the bands and say, hey, welcome to Christmasville, Merry Christmas. We want you to enjoy yourself, we want you to enjoy the rides. We know for a fact that that mom could not afford to do that. Now, when you do that and you have a mom look at you with tears in her eyes, I'm telling you, it's a, it's a touching thing. But the festival is more than just a celebration for, for people coming in from out of town. It is for the community that we all love and that we all work for and represent. If you go over to the next page, look at how many days people visit Christmasville. The blue here represents one day. The majority of the folks spend one day at the festival, but look how many come two days, three days, and even four days. This is a four-day festival. By the way, put on your calendar the last day of November, because it starts the last day of November and runs three days into December. It's a four-day festival. So, the next page, now we're getting down to H-TAXes, okay? Let's look at, will you eat at a restaurant while visiting Christmasville? Ninety percent of the folks who visit Christmasville, and I'm talking about seventy-five thousand people, ninety percent of the folks said they'll eat at a restaurant while they're at the festival. The next page talks about the H-TAX as far as how many folks are staying overnight. Now, look at the bottom, ninety point four eight percent on the graph. That represents the folks that are local. They're in our community, they're not going to spend the night, but it's interesting that ten percent of the folks are spending the night, either one, two, three nights you're in Christmasville. Are you a Rock Hill resident? On the next page, forty-four point one six percent said they're Rock Hill residents. So, is this a festival for the community? Yes. How did you hear about Christmasville? That's where we need the continued support. We have to get the word out about Christmasville. Yes, we use the internet, a lot of folks hear about it, but we also put up billboards, we put out marketing brochures and advertising and those are free, the brochures and so forth on Christmasville and all the activities. By the way, we had seventy-five activities during Christmasville last year. Seventy-five events, maybe five of them were cost to do, but so much for folks to enjoy. Look at the next page, who's the Christmasville customer? The average Christmasville customer is thirty-seven point three-year-old lady who traveled seventeen point six miles with at least three other people in her party and she spent thirty-five dollars and one cent per day and visited the festival for one point five seven days. She and her party contributed almost two hundred and twenty dollars to the local economy while visiting Christmasville. The last page is, let's talk about the economic impact of these seventy-five thousand folks. Forty thousand at the festival, thirty-five thousand at the parade, as I mentioned before, thirty-one point six percent are from more than thirty miles away. Twelve thousand six hundred and forty visitors traveled from out of town to York County for this festival. Nine point five two percent of our town guests spent at least one night in a hotel. That's twelve hundred and three visitors stayed overnight. Ninety point four eight percent, as I said before, all attendees would be considered day trippers, local folks, local. H-TAX and ATAX estimates that overnight guests... H tax and A tax estimates that overnight guests will spend about $100 a day, day trippers will spend about $34 a day. So what does that equate to? It equates to $120,300 estimated economic impact from the overnight stays, and $2,509,98 economic impact from the day trippers. So $2,629,398 is what was estimated as far as the economic impact of Christmasville. Unless I have it all wrong, I believe that that's, this is what the purpose of the hospitality tax was for. Now, we heard a very good presentation earlier about, you know, what are we going to use those hospitality tax for? What are we going to use the H tax for? Are we going to put it into, let's say, capital improvements that will create more H tax dollars? Or are we going to support a quality of life for not only the folks who are local, but a quality of life for folks who are coming here? Now, these are parents, grandparents, uncles, aunts, and I know because I talked to them on the street during Christmasville. I know where they're coming from, and I see the families. So I, as we move forward with our hospitality dollars, and you decide how we're going to spend these, please keep in mind the Christmasville Festival. We appreciate the support. I cannot thank the volunteers enough, the hundreds of volunteers that we have for the festival, but we need your support to be able to continue this festival. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you, and I would entertain at this time any questions that you might have about Christmasville, and I do ask for your support.
Thank you, John. We're gonna move forward, it'll get late in the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thanks, thanks for all you do. So, we've not had a motion on this, do we have any motions?
Motion to deny the grant application for Christmasville.
Do I have a second? Okay, now we have discussion. Mr. Williams.
And I just wanna say, I wanted to reconsider all of them. I felt like we kinda jumped ahead. I mentioned that we need to look at our ordinance before we jump ahead of this, and I think we need to do that, and I think that's what we did, at least some of the ones, some of the things, some of the reasons I did, but when I look back at what we did when we defeated the first motion, was made a bunch of assumptions without looking at the H tax applications, and we have an H tax commission that is using the rules that we have put in place, and, and we're, we're changing them. I agree with Mr. Huckabee, maybe we need to change them, but the fact of the matter is, we have not yet. So looking back on it, we used to get all the applications, so since the only one we are talking about is Christmasville, I did get their, asked to get their applications in care, and sent, would send them to me, and I saw the scores, and I would, I would support as I would if the rest of them had, had come back, or at least open discussion on each of them, one at, one at a time, that, that we fund Christmasville as recommended by the H tax commission. That's a long way of saying that I'm against this motion.
Okay. No, no comments? Mr. Johnson, I'll just go ahead and land.
Thirteen years is a long time to be receiving H tax dollars. Is Christmasville a good thing? Yes, I don't, I don't have any question that this is a worthy, worthy event that is, you know, that they could receive funding. My question is this, H tax dollars should generate H tax funding in unincorporated areas. I believe that. I have said that from the get-go. That is the purpose of H tax dollars. It is to help stimulate growth and tourism growth specifically in unincorporated areas. I believe Christmasville generates a good bit of tourism. I believe that tourism, though, is located in Rock Hill, in a city which has its own H tax, which this organization can certainly receive that H tax. I believe that the county, I don't believe it's short-sighted for the county not to look at these things. I think the county has been giving money to these types of events for years and years, and eventually you have to stop. And I, I don't, I don't question that, that it is estimated that people spend $100 a day and $34 a day for day trippers. I do question, and I question this for almost everything that comes in before us, economic impact of $2.5 million. That is out, if that is true, then I hope Christmasville continues forever. But when we look at something like the BMX, H tax collections went down in the unincorporated parts of the county during the BMX event. We actually brought in less money than we normally do. Rock Hill brought in more money, we brought in less, and we were a massive contributor to that. I think we need to relook at the way we are giving up money, especially on these grants like this, but I, I, I opposed giving funds to numerous events last time. I continue to oppose that today. That, that has not changed.
Ms. Cox.
I don't like how we dealt with the issue to begin with. I, I think that what happened and what I, what I see us doing is, we made a decision at two meetings ago, and then one additional thing was carved out because it looks like one entity got mad that one, that another municipal entity still had some funding in a category that, that didn't fit the, the realm of, of what the new formula is. There was discussion at the last meeting that perhaps we should have given some forewarning to folks, and that was the reason why I opposed the last motion, because maybe we should have brought that back up to have a full discussion instead of piecemealing this bit by bit in order to get certain, certain things done. In this particular case, that's the reason why I don't support this motion, and while I understand and appreciate, and certainly am in favor of ensuring that we keep H tax, our job is to ensure that we try to force our H tax money into the unincorporated areas so that we can track that as a council. We also have a duty to support our municipalities, and I think the way that we handled this is, is not the appropriate way to do it, so I will not be supporting the motion.
Mr. Roddy.
I wasn't at the last meeting, but the prior one, when we did not fund several applications through the H tax, I said that night we were doing it all wrong. Honestly, I wanted to, I would have liked to have seen a more solid notification of, if you're in this boat of, and your program's been running X number of years, do not ask for this funding. But we didn't give that solid notification for this time around. You know, it was said, that notification went out a couple of years ago, that the funding was gonna start to, to decrease, but I would have much rather seen a statement being made, if you're in a longstanding program, and if we're not gonna fund these longstanding programs, send that notification to say, that's why I asked Watts earlier, what's a good number? If you've been running 10 years, 12 years, 15 years, you should be off the money. At the same time, when you see a program start up like the Strawberry Festival, who didn't submit because they were told you weren't gonna get anything, we should have given that same notification to the ones that we weren't gonna fund. And I understand a lot of programming goes into these things, and setting budgets, and comedians get together, and we're talking about Christmasville, maybe in March, April, budgets and things are getting set, visions are being, being made, preparation being made, and to find out, in the case of Summer, uh, Summerfest, we were up here that Monday night, snatching a rug out from under them on Monday night, and the program was on Saturday. That's a little different for Christmasville, but they were in the same boat that got the rug snatched from under them with less than a week's notice. And when you look at some of the paperwork that they were spending money on, and, but that's neither here nor there, we can go back and scrutinize what any festival spends their money on, but if we're gonna stop funding these programs, me personally, I would have loved to have seen an end date of X number of years for these type programs to say, you can't get anymore, and if you do get any funding, you're at $3,500, $2,500, or whatever that cutoff, number of years is gonna be, whatever that cutoff value and funding is gonna be. Because I said earlier, we do have people from the unincorporated areas that do visit these events, who love them, who make it family day trips and, and support them, and at the same time, we do have city residents coming inside of some of our county resident, in some of our county areas, in unincorporated areas, spending money at some of those restaurants. So it's going both ways. We can't just say, just because it was generated in the unincorporated areas, that city residents, whether they're from Rock Hill, Fort Mill, inside the City of York, they're not going to some of these unincorporated restaurants, because we all know, if you're going up 77 anytime on a weekday morning or weekend, you may just frequent the Crackle Barrel, and I think that's one of the biggest contributors to the unincorporated H tax areas in, in the county. But certainly, I said it that night, we, we done it all wrong, we should have given that hard, fast number. If you're on so many years, don't ask for any H tax money. Maybe we need to revamp the whole process. I'm personally looking for that, that number of years. I'm looking for setting a low max of even some of these programs that do want to come back. You know, if you've been on the program for 10, 11, 12 years, the maximum a program can receive, $2,500, $3,000. We can set that number so that we just don't throw them to the wolves, because I do recognize some citizens that live in the unincorporated areas frequent inside the city, and some inside the city frequent some of these outside the city unincorporated area restaurants. So we're paying it both ways, and I think it's only fair because these events do provide a good quality of life, a good, good cultural thing for this area, because I don't think that having Christmasville, Come See Me, Summerfest, in two counties over. I think this is some unique stuff that we're doing here, whether it's during July, whether it's during December, whether it's during the month of April. This is what this area has put together, and it makes it a special area, because, you know, Down in Gaffney or Spartanburg, they would love to have a Come See Me, or Christmasville, or Summerfest, or some of these other things that we have here. I think that makes this area really, really special. And I, and I'm sure other areas wish they had these type problems of how we're gonna spend this kind of money. Other areas are struggling to generate this kind of money, but we're faced with a, a different problem as to how we're gonna spend it. It just makes it difficult to, to open this back up and give it to one group, and we know we've snatched a rug out from under so many other groups. I would have loved to have put it all back on the table, say, let's, let's fund each project this year and set this thing in stone. If you're X number of years into this, receiving this money, don't apply. Or set that maximum that you can't go over a small amount. So it, this is a real tough decision, but when it comes to fairness, if we're gonna reconsider and do it for Christmasville, I wish I would have been here last, two weeks ago to, to talk about the Summerfest, to talk about the Come See Me's, to talk about all the other ones that we didn't fund. So this really makes it a, a real difficult decision, but in, in all fairness, if we're gonna open it up and, and come back to Christmasville, we really need to put the others on the table as well.
I'm gonna let Ms. Love have hers.
And I wanna, sorry.
Okay.
You were coming this way, but you didn't get to me. I don't want to-
Well, I thought, I thought you'd already, it might be my bad. I thought you'd already spoke, hadn't made the motion, but I'll go to, go to you if you didn't speak originally. That's right, I went to Mr. Williams, I'm sorry.
Well, a couple of things. One, you know, I think what Mr. Reinhardt showed is, is true. Christmasville's a wonderful festival, so is Summerfest, so is, you know, the Fort Mill Strawberry Festival. Fort Mill was not called and told, you're not getting any money. Fort Mill did not put in an application, and they were asked, where is your application? And they said, we've seen the writing on the wall, because for three years, we've sat up here as council members, and at least a couple of us have said, we're going to cut this funding out over time. We do not want to continue line item funding for festivals that are decades old and successful. So there has been forewarning coming from at least a couple of council members on this council for a number of years, and that Fort Mill saw that and said, we're not applying this year. It wasn't that somebody on the council or anybody else called Fort Mill and said, don't apply, you're not getting any money. Fort Mill said, we're not applying because we've seen what y'all are saying, we've heard you, and we're gonna come up with something else. We've got another plan for something else, for request for money. So, you know, there has been forewarning. Fort Mill was not treated any differently than anybody else. As a matter of fact, they were asked where the application was. I think it was bad timing on Summerfest part, I've said this every time I've been up here, and I've chaired Summerfest before, I'm a member of the Greater York Chamber of Commerce. It was bad timing on their part, but if you go back and look at the minutes from the night that Ms. Love made that motion, I said I was going to support the motion because we were treating all festivals the same, and we were cutting all of them. Now, in that motion, I did not catch, we had a mistake, that we left out one festival and left them funded. That's why two weeks ago, I asked for this to be put back on the agenda, to correct that wrong and treat all the festivals the same, and cut the funding on Christmasville just like we did the rest of them. I supported it that night for that reason, we were treating all these established decades old festivals the same. As I've looked at this more and more, it's also come to light that we are collecting this hospitality tax money that we're doing these grants with and that we're approving this money for, is collected, not a lot in my district, because there's about three restaurants in my entire district that are in the unincorporated area. There's a couple in Christie's area.
If you build it, they will come.
But, most of these are in Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Love's districts that we collect this money for. And with these grants, we have taken this money from the unincorporated areas, and we have given it to the incorporated areas for festivals that are very successful and do bring a lot of people into area. And they eat at all of these restaurants that are in the unincorporated, or in the incorporated areas. And they spend money there, and they pay hospitality tax to the incorporated municipalities, not to us. There is some during normal times when, you know, some of these people who live in York drive out to Palmetto Seafood or Sharon Grill, and they eat during the week. That's not during Summerfest. That's not, you know, all the, the, the food truck vendors and the vendors who were here during Summerfest, and I'm not just picking on Summerfest, it's just the one I'm familiar with, I can give the example, they collected the H tax from those vendors, and it was paid to the City of York. All the restaurants in York are in the unincorporated area. So they all collected taxes for the City of York that the citizens of the unincorporated parts of the county underwrote. The same thing happened with BMX, as was said earlier. BMX was a tremendous event, brought in millions of dollars and tens of thousands of hundreds of thousands of people. And the City of Rock Hill had a huge increase in their accommodations tax and their H tax. We lost money in H tax that year, or that, for that week. We spent money to promote something with our unincorporated citizens' dollars in the incorporated area of Rock Hill, which is a tremendous event, it was a great event, I'm not knocking it, but shouldn't the entity that is reaping the benefit be the one that's helping to pay to offset these things? And that's why I made the motion to deny for all of those reasons above. Number one, first, right off the bat, was I said that night, I was, I was supporting it to cut all of them, and I still think we should cut that one.
Ms. Love, and then I'll wrap it up, because ladies and gentlemen, it's getting late. Ms. Love?
So, I wasn't on council, and I didn't know a lot about the hospitality dollars, so I attended a few meetings, but what, where I was, was at the two meetings, the two prior years, one, one year, the first year being when council said to the audience, these applications are not complete. And I thought, wow, how, why would we approve anybody's application that's incomplete? So I left that night just thinking, wow. And then the next year, it came up again, and everybody was told, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna start looking at this, we're gonna start looking at this harder. And I mean, I heard that, just, just like, if you're sitting out there and you're just at a meeting for something else, you're hearing this. So, when it, when it came around, you know, I'm gonna leave part of what I was gonna say out, you're welcome for it, but, um-
See, experience makes surprise, or see it on the weekly game.
Yeah, I've learned, I have learned so much tonight, I have to tell you, but, and we're not done. But, um, so, I like to think of it as tough love, and there was a little, little farm out in, in Clover that I highly encouraged to put in an application for- for some hospitality dollars. And the ultimate reason that they didn't put in those dollars, was because they felt like they were going up against Christmasville, and Come See Me, and a lot of big things, and they felt like that's who was going to get the money. And, you know, at that point, we didn't know, we didn't know who was going to get the money. Personally, what I would like to see, I participated in the very first Christmasville, I had a booth there. It was a miserable weekend, because, you know what, nobody knew about Christmasville at that time. Now, you can't even walk up and down the streets. It is, it's fantastic. I will say, it's fantastic. I 100% support Christmasville. I think it's a great, great event. I think it's great for Rock Hill. And the way I look at this, is that $10,000, when you're talking about $10,000, and the estimated economic impact for the City of Rock Hill, basically, was $2,006,000, that $10,000 is not really much to Christmasville. But that, parts of that $10,000, because my little farm out in Clover probably would have gotten a area of $4,000, they could have advertised a lot more, they could have maybe had a band, they could have done something, marketing-wise. And I just think it is so much more important to a startup event like that. So, you know, I'm the guest speaker at the Lake Wally Chamber, if they're still going to have me, I'm sorry, Lake Wally Visitor Center, if they're still going to have me in about two weeks. And I'm going to take a lot of heat for this, but I'm going to stand by my decision, because I think that we just have to look at this, and to continue to give money over and over to something, and something is growing, and that's great, but it's also, at some point, it becomes self-supportive. And if any of these events are self-supportive, Come See Me and Christmasville definitely should fall into that category. So, I think y'all have done a great job, John, and I appreciate, I appreciate your heart, because you've got your heart in Christmasville. And what I just want to see, is some other things get started, and end up as great as Christmasville.
So, I was kind of planning ahead, so I'll just educate myself. You are against the motion.
I don't remember what the motion was.
Motion was to deny. Motion was to deny the funding.
Motion was to deny.
I am going to agree with denying the funding.
Denying the funding, okay. Sorry about that, I was planning ahead. Well, that's great. So, per my account, I guess I'm the tiebreaker, and I was not here for the original discussion. So my attitude was, I was going to stay out of it, because it wasn't fair to the other council members, so I guess it's not fair to the council members if I don't vote now. So, there's a saying about never bring back a discussion once you vote, and I can, everybody can see why that's the case now. If I had been here, and I was on vacation, if I had been here, I would have recommended that everybody get a one-year flat notice, that, you know, it's kind of hitting them right at the deadline, that, you know, I agree with the logic that we're planning, I agree that we need to move forward on ways to complement all the great things the cities do, like what John is doing with Christmasville, and the great thing it does provide for the quality of life. But I would have, at that meeting, recommended that, "Let's give everybody a year's notice." So since that's the way I still feel, based on that, I will oppose the motion, so everybody can have that year's notice, but this time next year, I'll be on the side of what's been recommended in the past. That being said, question on the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Motion fails.
So...
Motion was denied.
Yeah, that failed.
Motion fails.
So Christmasville keeps.
Item number two.
Okay. Yeah, I'm getting confused myself now, the motion didn't...
Motion to deny failed.
Failed, okay.
So Christmasville gets theirs, and we cut everybody.
Once you asked that, I was getting confused.
That's exactly what I wanted.
Okay.
That's why I want to talk about all of them.
No.
No.
We already funded them.
Yeah, so...
Christmasville gets to keep its funding.
But with all this discussion up here, here again, that's why you should never bring something back, because it creates a lot more confusion. But I'm going to go by what I would have felt like, if I'd been here under their original discussion, to give it one more year, and this is it, that's it, and I'm going to agree with that in the future, but I think you should have had the year's notice. Okay. "Council to consider an application for a public service used to construct a county-owned water storage tank on tax map number 721000069 in the Fort Mill community."
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm...
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
This has been an issue, and I actually, I've driven out to the site several times, talked to several people on the telephone. We had a study done, that study showed that this is the only site. There is not an alternative site, there is not a secondary site. I heard lots of people kept telling me, "Oh, no, no, there's a second site that's just as good." Actually, there's not. This is that site. I would ask, that, just as I did last time, that staff guarantee that the road will be repaired after construction, and brought better than it is today, back to those, for those people. And if at all possible, that we limit access only to, you'll have to forgive me, my mind's gone blank, the alternative road, there's a road behind it. Now, I know that may not be possible, but I'm asking us to do anything in our possibility to use the other road, and not the Baxter Road, to do it. There's a Carolinas...
Yeah, but...
My mind's gone blank. Central Carolinas.
There's not a driveway.
You can get back there. I drove back there. But, this is, this is something where we have, I don't ever like to say we're too far down the road, and we're not too far down the road to kill it, we could certainly stop this in its tracks. But this is the logical place for this water tower, this place, at this time, and that is why I seconded the motion.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry?
I'd like to move to amend the motion.
Ms. Cox.
To require sufficient protections to prevent graffiti, or any, help me formulate the words, I can't get it today. To prevent, the concerns that were raised by the folks here, were that someone might improperly access it, and...
Well, who made the motion?
Chad.
Chad, are you okay with that?
Well, I mean, I was the first staff. I am assuming that that is done in the fence and everything, but I don't have a problem of validating that as part of the motion.
Okay, well, that would be great, so we can move forward.
And not only that, I was seconding, not only that, I hope we're doing that at all, I assume we're doing that at all water towers, that this is not just Fort Mill's water tower that we're keeping graffiti off of. This is standard practice.
Exactly.
I got a quick question. Would this water tower look like the one we have on Main Street in Rock Hill?
It doesn't have football USA on it.
The lighted one, the one with the lights on?
Are we going to shoot lights up on this one?
No, it won't look like that one. It will look like the two, that one's in the outskirts, though.
Okay, yep, it's going on for a long meeting now. Question on the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Now we'll do some new business, did you get that, Linda? Yeah. Jim Britton with Cumming Corporation, to give us an update on the building program.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members, in an effort to be brief, mindful of your time, I will just be highlighting the report that we received last week. Having said that, if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to interject them. Tab section one, start with moss justice expansion. We've got two bid packages. The, I'm not sure where the clicker is. The first bid package is for the tunnel and surface parking. Surface parking has been completed, and the second bid package, it also includes a tunnel and parking deck. The foundations are in progress at the parking deck, and we'll be starting precast panels in mid-October. Second package is contingent on the first package. Obviously, we need to get the surface, the parking deck open, so that we can overtake the other parking lots, and start the expansion process. This is an aerial photo, the aerial is about almost three weeks old, but it gives you a good idea. Foundations for the parking deck, this is the tunnel, we're doing walls, and we'll be capping that tunnel, that's the detainee tunnel that gets them from the detention area up into the court. The next project is the Family Court. Again, we've got two projects, bid packages here. The first bid package is coming to completion, we're about 99% complete with the building pad, we're verifying all the elevations, in an effort to turn it over, first week in October, to the construction, the building package.
Is it okay if I ask you, as you go to each...
Please do.
...and don't come back?
Yeah, please do.
So on that one, on the building site elevation buildup, or whatever, is that any issue at all?
No, it's, and I've got an aerial, this is the site, Main Street is here, Heckles here, and then Heckles down here. So this is the building, parking lot and building pad, this little depression is where the Sally Port will go. But the front of the building faces Main, and then we're actually putting curb and gutter, and getting all this ready, and the parking lot will be here as well, so...
So the topography's working out pretty...
It's good. It's good soil, it was what we call light. This had to be trucked in, in the lighter color soil, which was part of the bid package. Any other questions? The next project is the Clover and Fort Mill magistrate. Phase one of the Fort Mill component has been completed and turned over, and is being occupied, that was your tenant space. The second component is almost complete, will be finished in November. Both these, it's a couple of months ahead of schedule. The, this is Clover, it's in between sheeting and waterproofing, but we're, be dried in in a couple of weeks. This is a security entrance, we've taken over the entire magistrate area, and fully renovating it, plumbing, electrical, whatnot. And this is the Fort Mill, it's the old Fort Mill district office, school district office. This is the government center, site work continues, we're about 80% complete, you saw it when you came in. We will start foundations early, probably around the 25th, that project is on schedule. This is an aerial photograph, it's changed a good bit since this was taken, we now have it fenced off. We actually encountered a building foundation, some masonry this today, but other than that, we're just about finished. Public Works supports, the contractor has completed the detention pond, and he is, and the building pad is complete, starting some foundations. This is an aerial photograph, this is the equipment maintenance, that's the function that goes on in this building. Once this is completed, we will demolish this and build a new road maintenance. We're also in the process of moving forward with the addition to the administration and building maintenance. This is recycling, off to a good start there. Site work is almost complete, building pad is complete, and foundations are underway. FYI, all projects have been bid, except for the Heckle component, and I'm happy to say all projects are under budget to date. I'll be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions for Jim? And on time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We've had some weather delays, but nothing that's substantial.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it, sir.
Okay, we've got our county manager's evaluation to do, so in the process of time, let's try to be as concise as we can. To add to that being concise, let me read this, and then I'll ask staff about it a little bit. "Council to discuss and provide direction to staff to prepare proposed ordinance revisions to the zoning code by making concrete plants and mining operations a special exception in the Light Industrial ID and UD zoning districts, and identify a timeline for presenting the proposed revisions." So Andy, I would ask you, just to be blunt, does the staff see this as a needed new priority, or will it take away from what they consider more important priority demands? Number one, and if the staff feels like this is not of their highest priority, what would you recommend, or staff, excuse me, staff recommend, to address Ms. Love's concerns in this regard?
To answer your first question, Mr. Chairman, no, sir. It is my opinion, that this doesn't rise to the level of superseding any other council-directed initiative that staff is currently working on. So the answer to that is no, sir. I don't think it rises to that level. As important as it may be to rectify some of these things right now, no, sir. My recommendation, then, since staff is not prepared adequately from a staffing standpoint, nor from a time standpoint, to deal with this particular issue, I would recommend looking possibly into a consultant, or some outside entity, performing this evaluation, and drafting the appropriate ordinances, or modifications to any ordinances.
Discussion. Mr. Winkler.
Okay. Couple of things, there, the, there's more than one thing that we need staff working on for zoning-type things right now, and I know we have given staff 9,000 different directions on things in the last few months, we've talked about that. We did put into the budget for planning, when we did the budget this past year, money for consultants. If it can speed things along, and help lighten the load on the staff some, for us to do an RFQ, to find some people who can help fix our zoning, and do some of this for, not only for maybe for cement plants, but, you know, for, we've talked about it some recently, for event centers. I've got a, a number of things in my district right now, I've got a person who sat in my office the other day, talked to me, they were looking to buy a bunch of property, and open up an event center, a wedding chapel-type thing, and there's nowhere in the county that allows that right now. There is no zone in anything we do in the county that allows somebody to do that type of an event center. I've had, I think Ms. Love has one in her district, had somebody else reach out to me with the same type thing. I was in Sharon this weekend, and somebody there was telling me that they were looking to start a wedding chapel and events center-type thing, and Sharon, being as small as it is, doesn't have a planning and zoning department, so they rely on the county, and they follow the county zone. So that means this business in Sharon can't open their wedding chapel and business. So that's, Chairman Blackwell always talks about being business-friendly in this county, and here are three, possibly four businesses that I know of right now, that are wanting to open in the county, and we're telling them, "There's no way they can. There's nowhere in our county that allows that type of business, and they can't do it." And we're not talking about a business that nobody wants, you know, we're not talking about some of these shady back alley kind of businesses. We're talking about a good legitimate business that fulfills a service to someone. So, I would support us doing what we set aside some money for, and supporting the planning staff with doing an RFQ to find some people who can help, and let's bring in a consultant to correct this, get these ordinances updated, and then, really, let's look at a lot of them, because our zoning has gotten very cumbersome, and outdated in a lot of ways, through no fault of our staff, they've done a lot to try to clean some of that up, but we've given them so many other things to do, they can't do that, and so, I would fully support doing that, since we've already set aside money for it.
So, for Ms. Love, I don't, I mean, this is a big, important issue with you, for the, I just, I don't want to interrupt anything you want to say, or take time away from that, but would you be open to that suggestion, then, since staff is so overwhelmed, that they bring back a cost factor from a consultant, and if it's agreeable with us, we move forward that way?
That was going to be my suggestion, because there are several things that are very important, and I just, I just don't feel like that we, as a county, need to be at a stall on getting these things, getting these things looked at. And so, we've got the development design standards that we've, that Michael Johnson and I have worked with staff, and the riverkeepers, on some things that we would like to do, to, just some standards that we'd like to put in place, actually, some standards that we'd like to raise. And we've got concrete plants, mining, and quarries, that's an issue, and that's not just a one-time thing, that is a thing that's going to be coming up numerous times in the very near future, more than likely, based on our growth. And we, I'm not trying to eliminate those things, what I'm trying to say is that, we need to determine when they come about, they need to be special exceptions, we need to have a say on some of those things. And there are probably a couple others that I haven't mentioned, and then the special events, you know, if there are this many, just in the last few weeks that have come up, there are obviously a lot more. So, I just think it's in our best interest to have a consultant to review all of the uses in our ordinances, that, I don't know how we prioritize that, where we start and where we end with that, but there's some things that are more important to me than others. Events, obviously, is a high priority, because we've got, Robert's got one, and I've got one, that's a land sale right now, is hinging on what those people are going to be able to do. So I think, I think it's very important to look at it, I just don't think that we can... I just don't think that we can stop what we're doing and try, and, you know, because, because we can't, because we can't continue. I think it's, I think it's important that we, that we have the staff or we use these consultants to keep, to keep moving.
So if it's agreeable to Mr. Roddy? Okay, well, Mr. Roddy?
Yeah, and we've had a lot come up here in the last month or two with some zoning, some special events. I know even over in my area, the Katz Paul winery situation has come up, so, and I think simply because we don't have the staff to designate to some of these projects, to write some of these ordinances or look at some of this stuff, I don't think that's good enough for our citizens, for us not to address it just because we don't have the staff. And like Rob said, if we designated some funding to go out and pull some consultants, I don't know if, if some of these issues would rise to the level of spending money on a consultant for, but at the same time, I don't think we should penalize or hold hostage someone's opportunity to start a business, develop a business, or pick a location, simply because we don't have the staffing available to put the time in or put the work in, because we have set our priorities, we have tied people up. So if it's something that needs to come to council to say, hey, these issues are worth designating a consultant to, then I would certainly be for that, because this is not the nineteen eighties, this is not the nineteen nineties. You know, things are changing, and we need to be better equipped to accommodate some of these new businesses that's coming to the area. We may not have them now, but trust me, with the way we talk over here and taking part of what we got going on, we're gonna see some new ideas, some new businesses that wanna come, and just because we haven't addressed them doesn't mean they wouldn't be a good fit for this area. So if we need to spend some consulting money on it to help us facilitate new opportunities, then if we got it, then I wouldn't be hesitant to be for it as well.
And it may be better to call the subcontractor to just kind of allow some other people to do the work that's needed. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, Mr. Shanahan was trying to add something, but I guess what I wanted to add, I don't have a problem with making these special exceptions. I guess what I want to do is support staff. I've got, you know, got an email talking about the, what we're on, and we've got priorities, and we keep changing priorities. I can appreciate that. I, if we're gonna go to the consultant route, I just want to make sure, a part of supporting staff is following through with the consultant and doing what they say. It's, consultants don't take staff's time. They don't, they don't free staff from all time. I guess shortly after I got on, we started a unified development ordinance, which coincidentally enough would have, a lot of these problems would have been addressed as part of that. But before we changed five at one time, we asked, or maybe, no, it was after that. Any, whenever it was, we stopped that process about three quarters of the way through the process. That's certainly not gonna, gonna, gonna support staff, so we probably, I don't, if you want to use consultants, I just want to make sure that we have goals, we know where we're going, and there's not a danger of pulling the plug before we get finished.
Okay, let's wrap this up. Well, Ms. Cox?
Time is of the essence, and I understand that we, you know, what concerns me is that I think this council up here has said repeatedly that we are willing to fund this area in order to get some stuff done. We need to get some stuff done on this growth management. We need to get our zoning ordinances up to speed. I've still not heard from staff, what do you need to help get this done? We've got, I understand, we've got some catch-up to do, and I am full, I guess my point is, I'm fully in favor of doing this. I thought we've already said let's do this previously. These things are a priority, all of them. I mean, as I recall it, just in this past year, we asked, there was the issue with McGill, and their concerns with BD one and BD three, and I think after that meeting, we said we need to fix that. There's a problem with convenience centers being in BD three that shouldn't be there, that should be in BD one, that were holding folks hostage. We have got to get this done. I'm prepared to fund it, because the people in the community are coming to us, and we're Johnny come lately, because we can't address it when it gets here. We're being too reactive.
Okay, well, I think that's where we're headed, but I think Bill and/or Kevin wanted to say something. Did, huh?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I just asked Audrey, was this a good money impact? What was, what was it budgeted for? And it's already been moved around. Basically, Audrey's gonna chime in, but get this wrong. Either y'all got the impact fee study or the stormwater fee study.
But we want to add money. We gotta get this done.
Just so you know where the money is allocated, I don't have money for this consultant. The money has been allocated for the thoroughfare plan, the stormwater utility district study. I have seventy thousand for an impact fee study. We sent the RFQ out. That's up to council whether or not they want to move forward. And then there was the stormwater ordinance. I had some extra consulting money left for that, and I'm in the process of preparing an RFP, and that would take all the money I have in my consulting budget.
Let's, let's do this, because we are drowning on a timeframe right now. Let's go ahead and find out what we have to take, either the general fund balance?
I'll make them.
Right, and then. Right, sounds great.
And it may not be a consultant. Maybe we just need to hire a special legal counsel just to do it. I mean.
Whatever we gotta do, let's.
Yeah, they're gonna work it out.
Yes, we will, we will work it out.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. And because we're pushed for time, I'm gonna let Audrey, is this you or Andy that's gonna do this? But all we want to do is, I think Ms. Cox requested this, update the public service application and general public notice requirements for public hearing policy. If you could give us the Cliff Notes version of how it works, and then we're gonna move on to the next.
Okay. Public hearing first. As council may remember, Councilwoman Love was the only one not on council when this happened. Council asked us in two thousand fifteen to amend the ordinance to provide public notice on rezonings. At that time, the notice was only sent for variances and special exceptions. We did change the ordinance. We put in two hundred and fifty feet radius for rezoning, special exceptions, variances, communication towers, and public service uses. That was in effect for about three months, maybe four months. Council asked us to increase that to five hundred feet. We did draft an ordinance. If I remember correctly, at that time, we presented it to council. Legal council then presented their concerns that when you go above and beyond statutory requirements, it opens up a procedural claim. He asked that maybe we do this as a policy. So we took out the public notice requirement from the ordinance, and in March of two thousand sixteen, the planning department set a policy for public notices. Those, that policy is, and it's been in effect for a year and a half, rezoning, special exceptions, and communication towers are five hundred foot radius with a minimum of thirty parcels. Variances and public service uses are just a two hundred foot, two hundred and fifty foot radius, and the reason that staff has that policy is, one, variances are very localized. We thought it would create a tremendous amount of issues to go too far out, because you kind of get neighbors with axes to grind on a variance that is maybe just a little setback, that really is not a big issue. And the same thing with public service uses, because those are infrastructure projects and very important, we felt two hundred and fifty feet was sufficient to provide notice and keep, keep things still moving. So that's where we stand today.
Thank you, Audrey. If anybody has any concerns or questions, let's get with Ms. Miller.
Well, I have some comments that I'd like to make.
Well, go ahead and make a quick comment, but we're not gonna, we're gonna move forward. We're not, this is not.
This is extremely important to the folks that are out there, so I think we need to give this some time. I mean, the council, as I understood it, voted for, and I, five hundred feet radius for these notices, and we went along with the public policy because there was concern about the statute. The bottom line is only ten to eleven people got notice of this pump station. All of this is prompted by some folks who contacted me, and I was unaware of the fact that there was a pump station request being requested in my district. So this is gonna come knocking on you guys' doors later, and I think that it's important for council to be aware of that. In the course of doing that, learned that applications, the application was incomplete, and that the standard policy in practice is just to push that through to the ZBA and basically let the applicant deal with the ZBA, and the ZBA to point out the insufficiencies in the application. To me, that's a potential problem. It was for me, because the folks in the community didn't know what they were looking at, because the application was incomplete, even per our staff standards. There also is the question about, in the ordinance for the public use decisions that have to be made by the ZBA, my understanding is staff does not have sufficient resources in order to be able to give the ZBA appropriate advice to make a decision on whether or not the location is or is not a good place to be. Again, this is an area that we have got to, if there's a standard, and ZBA is supposed to be entertaining these questions, we need to fund it and make sure that we're doing our job, so that when it goes there, it's getting done. So what I'm asking this council to do, and what I'll be bringing up, assuming that there's a majority of folks up here on the council who are willing to consider it, is that we do these three things, that we require five hundred feet radius notice on public uses, just like we do on the others, that we require applications that are submitted, that they be completed, and that they be completed to staff's, that you guys say it's completed. In this case, it wasn't completed to your, to your liking, and I think that we need to require folks to make sure that their applications are completed. I'm also requesting that, to the extent that there are resources that are needed in order to equip the ZBA to make a decision, we need to fund it, or we need to get rid of it, one. So I would ask council to support those initiatives, and I'll be happy to put them on the agenda if there's a majority.
So Audrey, if you could, I don't think that's too time-consuming. If you could just, she nailed clearly what her concerns were. If y'all could just kind of get with her and massage this and see where we need to go.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Committee reports. Public Works Committee meeting. The Honorable William Bump Roddy.
Yes, we met on Friday the eighth, and we were discussing some issues surrounding animal control, pet ordinances, and one of the takeaways from that, the main takeaway from that is York County looking to participate in the no-kill, no-kill program with animal control, and also there are some other minor changes that can be made at the staff level to help facilitate making animal control, making the animal shelter work and operate look more efficiently. So that was pretty much the nuts and bolts. Staff has presented us some, with some changes that they're looking to do internally to make everything over there go a lot smoother going forward, but the big takeaway is York County participating in the no-kill, I guess you can call it program, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy. Zoning Committee meeting. The Honorable Chairwoman, Allison Love.
So we met on September the eighth, and we just had a discussion of, just talking about reviewing the public hearing process. There's some different models that may benefit us, so we're gonna look, take a look at some of those different models, and we'll present those and see what everybody thinks. Several different things that sounded kind of interesting. Some potential code revisions to address wineries and special events, that's part of what we've already talked about tonight as well. The lot size update, and then we were a little short on time, and we talked about having a review of the light industrial ordinance and the review of the scenic overlay ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Honorable Chairman Michael Johnson, Finance and Operations.
Finance and Operations met this afternoon at five o'clock. We considered applications for the Riverview Fire Tax Board and approved Corinne McDonald. For the Bethesda Fire Tax District, we approved Marlo Dykes. For York County Library Board, we approved Sylvia Berry. Four, sorry. And for York County Economic Development Board, for the Winthrop University spot, we approved PN Saxena. We also had a discussion regarding boards and commissions members attendance. Finance and Operations is concerned about attendance specifically at the ZBA and planning meetings. We are not, we have had to cancel meetings due to a lack of quorum, and we often see votes of three to two, as opposed to the full group. Lots of the attendance numbers are, are not great. We appreciate our volunteers, and we always appreciate people volunteering to show up at things like that, but we want you to be actively engaged more often. And so we've asked that a letter go to the ZBA and the planning to, just to voice our concerns over attendance, and to remind them that there is a fifty percent number, and if you do not attend fifty percent, you are automatically removed from the committee, and some of them are coming close to that.
So this is to each individual member?
Each, every member, whether you have a hundred percent attendance or you have fifty-one percent attendance. Everyone will get one. And lastly, we received an update from Finance.
All right, now we got council member new non-agenda comments. Any comments? I see none. Mr. Williams?
No, I don't have any.
But I was gonna say one thing, but you just nipped it right there in the last sentence. I was gonna ask for staff to give me a record of attendance for the planning commission and ZBA for the past eighteen months, but I think the finance committee's on top of it. Okay, do we have a mo, we had nobody sign up for citizens' concerns? Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir. I move we go into executive session, discuss a personnel matter involving the county manager's semi-annual evaluation, to receive legal advice involving condemnation of project number zero zero four two three two five, tract number sixty-one, and to receive legal advice regarding condemnation of project number one 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 four nine dash zero zero seven, tract number seven.
Second.
Discussion.
Could you repeat that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, I could. But you did an excellent job. I appreciate that. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Back at nine fifteen. Okay, we're out of executive session. We have two motions.
Yes, sir. I move that we authorize a settlement offer for project number zero zero four two three two five, tract number sixty-one.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
I move that we authorize a settlement offer for project number one 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 four nine dash zero zero seven, tract number seven.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? And one last thing to add, we've done our evaluation of our county manager, and just would like to read this statement into the record. "Mr. Shanahan has been a tremendous asset to the management of our growth. He has assembled a staff of assistant managers and staff members of the envy of all counties in South Carolina. We look forward to continue our progress with Ms. Shanahan, Mr. Shanahan, and making York County the leader and model for all counties in South Carolina." Thank you, sir, for what you do. So if there's any, no further discussion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Close.
Right, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.